We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Well, we can't do that yet. Hold on a second. I dropped my gavel. Okay. The call is meeting to order. Would everyone please rise? And Pastor Doug Pratt, would you please come forward and give the invocation, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this opportunity to pray for you and for all of us. Lord, Creator of everything, we give you thanks for the privilege of living in this wonderful part of creation. We thank you for this nation we live in, for its blessings of freedom and liberty, and the privilege of being a part of a democracy. We pray, Lord, for the men and women who are our council members, that you might grant them the grace to be people of wisdom, who can hear well, speak clearly, discern, and decide. We thank you also, and pray for the staff that serve this city, that they might be people of excellence in all they do, attending to the details, and making the work of our city go smoothly and effectively. And, Lord, we pray for all of us as citizens, that our community might continue to grow in all ways, that we might, in a process such as this meeting and all meetings when we gather together, be blessed by the ability to listen, to speak with respect, and with mutual trust. Lord, help us to come to wise decisions that will be for the good of us all, as the Bible says, "That we might not look only to our own interests, but to the interests of others and the good of all." And I offer this prayer with thanksgiving, and with praise to you, and with a prayer that we might even, as we disagree, might not be disagreeable in the process. May God bless America, and bless the city of Benita Springs. Amen.
Amen. Councilman Staka, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
As you know, our nation's birthday is this Friday. Please show our love for our country by joining me in a hearty pledge.
Our pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very much. Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh. Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilman Slakda.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilman Simmons.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Longkart.
Here.
Pastor Doug Pratt, that was one of the finest invocations I've heard in a long time. I have to tell you, you're good at this. You've done it for a while, haven't you? All right. I'm gonna come to your church, and the whole thing will fall in. Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
All right, there we go. All right, at this time, we are going to have public comment on agenda items. If you want to speak on any of these agenda items, it's gotta be an item on the agenda. And, of course, this includes subject of the PD and E study, or the dreaded infamous flyover that's not there yet. But this is your time to speak on that subject as well. And yes, sir, come on forward.
Thank you. My name is Ed Fitzgerald. I live at 13100 Southampton Drive in Benita. I am before you tonight to oppose the proposed study that could lead to a flyover at Benita Beach Road and Route 41. You and the city council are equally aware, as are those who are here tonight, to remind you that a flyover is a massive structure that requires imposing physical modification of streets, roads, and existing businesses in the core area of the city. The resulting change to the area is unacceptable for many reasons, and no benefit derived from traffic improvement could equal the damage to the very nature of Benita Springs itself. The question before the council and the residents tonight is not just if the study should proceed, but why should any government agency fail to understand the reason for our residents' opposition? This is not a case of NIMBY, not in my backyard, but the importance of the opposition is far greater than any local impact. You, our city council, have the power to prevent the completion of the study itself, and stop the flyover by standing up to the Florida State agencies that want the traffic study to contain a flyover. A unanimous vote of this council would be very meaningful and helpful to the citizens of Benita Springs. I thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Yes, Alex Grant, 11851 East Terry Street, Benita Springs, former city councilman and member, former member of the local planning agency. I'd like to make a comparison of the cost for the flyover on US 41 and Benita Beach Road versus what we could do with the same type of money for railroad trackage improvement in Old 41 in Benita Springs. We could have a bus system to take us to the train station and back to where we want to go. This is an integrated transportation system. The cost is cheap, $75 million for fixing the present rail system to Amtrak standards for 105 miles of rail from Fort Greensprings in North Hardy County to just south of the Benita Springs city limits. For the $1 million flyover study, you could build a combination bus-passenger rail transfer station on the Lee Collier County line on the Old 41 road along the railroad right-of-way. With modern, computerized, and mechanized rail-laying equipment, you could rebuild this rail track to Amtrak standards at the rate of one mile per day, or a total of 105 construction days, versus who knows how many construction days for a flyover. Okay, let us use our brains to take the trains in order to, for the infill and for the population center of our town. Thank you, Alex Grant.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Please come forward.
I'm here to say that I strongly support planning for the future. That's my background in business, and it's my current point of view as a consultant. However, if we're going, and I don't know who, may I ask who the reps are from the Florida Department of Transportation, because I'm talking to them even more than you guys?
Well, no, you're-
I just wanted to, just wanted to know who they were. Is that okay?
Well, we're gonna find out here in a minute.
Okay.
And if you could just address us, that would be great.
Okay, okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I will. I love the idea of a traffic study, but I hate the idea of a flyover. And it seems sort of silly to waste a million dollars on something where theoretically the outcome says a flyover, most of you would vote against it. So why would we spend our tax dollars to have studies that say we're gonna do something which we already know we don't want to do? And if you say to me, "Well, we don't have to accept the flyover," I will say to you, "You voted five to two against doing the study, and we're doing the bloody study." So how can we believe that after spending a million dollars, they would take a no from us? So it just seems silly to me to waste money, and you've already said no, five of you, and it didn't make an ounce of difference, apparently. So I just ask you to please vote at seven to none this time, instead of just five to none. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. And don't be afraid to queue up there behind the next speaker. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jeff Lark, 27227 Pullan Avenue. I've, first time I came here 22 years ago, I learned the first day when we were staying about a mile north of Doc's Beach House, that in the afternoon, when you walked out, you didn't want to go anywhere. If you had something to do, do it earlier, because, you know, the roads then is completely backed up. You've done a lot of good stuff, and changes to the whole system and everything, but now you're looking at putting in a flyover. Instead of just saying no to the flyover, I actually had an idea. I gave Mr. Longkart my idea, basically to put a control tower there instead. You put two people up in that tower, they'd be able to control all four of the local intersections, your US 41 and Benita Beach, the one just north of it on 41, and the two sides on Benita Beach Road. You'd be able to, from that tower, you know, two stories up, you'd be able to watch everything, be able to control all the intersections. If you had an emergency vehicle coming through, you could clear the way for that, you know, emergency vehicle to come through. If there was something that happened then, you'd be able to, you know, immediately take some action. If something did happen there, you'd be a witness to it. You could have video cameras there that would be able to capture anything, any issues that went on. You would put, instead of spending all that money in a flyover, you could spend it in, you know, just taking care of that tower, which the maintenance on that would be, you know, what, 1% of what it would be to maintain a flyover? Then you'd be able to get a few people in there that would have full-time jobs, good jobs, and they'd be able to take care of it. So you'd keep it local. You wouldn't block anybody's view. You wouldn't block any access to any of the local businesses, because as soon as you put that flyover in, a number of those businesses are either gonna be, you know, bulldozed, or they're gonna be, go out of business, because nobody can get to them. They'll go to the next, you know, big intersection, and they'll go shop there. So I gave Mr. Longkart a copy of my, you know, vision, or whatever, and, you know, if you all want to look at it, feel free. And, you know, instead of just saying, "Say no," I gave you an option. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Larry McCoy from Vacuum Depot. We're directly affected by this. We're one of the businesses at the northwest corner of this intersection, at the Publix Plaza there. Several of the businesses asked me if I'd come to speak tonight for them as well. We have been dramatically impacted with all the construction and things that have gone on here in the very near past, and we all feel that this expansion would gravely impact our ability to do business in the city, as well as us to provide to the tax basis. We're currently at the process, in the plans of wanting to expand our own business, and we've actually put those plans on hold till we get the outcome of what's gonna happen with this, as well as we've looked at other areas to move as well. We've opened other locations in Naples, and are looking in other areas in case of what happens with this. In the past, this is deja vu for me. As a child, back in Michigan, we had a business that was directly affected by this exact thing, and we wound up having to move the business because of it. It almost put us out of business and bankrupted us. And we all feel that it will be a major impact to all of the businesses at that intersection. So we're hoping that you all vote against it on our behalf as well.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good evening, for the record. Kathy McGrath, property owner for 47 years, and I've lived here permanently for 30. First of all, the first things are on the consent agenda. I urge you to support this letter that you're writing to South Florida Water Management, because it's so important that they purchase the rest of the property out in Crewe. That's what's protecting our drinking water. And secondly, the Spring Creek restoration, fully support that, too. And now I want to discuss this study. Up until about a week ago, I'm against a flyover, but I was for the study. I felt, well, the study will take a couple of years, and it's projected for 2035. Let's see what it says. I was at the meeting when the presentation was made the other time, and at the time, questions were asked, and Mrs. Tower assured us that in other instances, if they did a study and came up with a proposal, if the elected officials and the residents were against it, they wouldn't do it. Somehow, when the feds are involved, I don't know if I could trust them unless you had something in writing. So be very cautious. I, I just, I'm against it now. You know, I, not as a pilot, but as a flight attendant, I flew commercially as a flight attendant for Pan Am. And I remember then, and then I got my pilot's license, and I remember now, and I think there's someone sitting up on the council who will agree with me that the most dreaded words we ever heard were, "I'm from the FAA. I'm here to help you." Well, this is the way I feel about this. I'm from the government. I'm here to help you. No, I don't think we need the study, and if there's any way, if there's any way that it can be voted against unanimously, I urge you to do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Mary Copeland, and I am a resident of Benita Springs. I have lived here for 14, going on 15 years, and I have been following this, the controversy, the information about the flyover. And in my travels, I've looked at the flyovers in Fort Myers. They're ugly. I don't care for them. I see the areas, and one particular area, I have traveled to it for nine, 10 years, because I'm the son that goes to a doctor right there. I don't like what happens to the area, how it's affected. And my concern is that the appearance for the city of Benita, and the also, that the fact that you voted five to two to stop this study, and my concern is when the federal government is involved. And I would like to see a unanimous vote from this committee here, or the town, saying that we will stop this, because I'm afraid that we may not be able to stop it once it gets going. And I'm here to say, the constituents really are not for this, so I'm putting it in your hands. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr.-
Good evening.
I'm Dave Gallagher from Cedar Creek. I really like our slogan, "Small-town charm, big, bright future." However, this flyover goes through, we're gonna need to change the slogan, I'm sorry. How can we have small-town charm with this massive concrete structure welcoming all our visitors? It just doesn't work. Many of us escape from big cities up north to avoid concrete jungles with overpasses and flyovers as far as you can see. We don't want to duplicate this concrete jungle down here for the price of saving a few minutes of driving time. I think the real problem with roads and traffic in our immediate area is with the congestion at the beach. That's the problem, I see. To help with this problem, I would like to see city council look into the idea of establishing a free shuttle between the new Publix and the beach. It looks like the plaza has plenty of parking spaces, and a shuttle would certainly increase foot traffic, and would help local businesses rather than drive them out of business. And I envision a series of stops between here and the beach, not just one stop. Let's keep our skylines as clean as possible, and work to retain our small-town charm. Please do not support the study of, or the building of, a flyover at the intersection of Benita Beach Road and Route 41. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Jan Backrack, and I live on McLaughlin Boulevard, and I agree that there is a lot of congestion coming down Benita Beach during season. And as much as I would hate to see a flyover, I think some solution would be, it would be nice if we could figure out some way to alleviate the congestion. But I'm not really in favor of a flyover. I think that would, number one, hurt the businesses in that area, and I also think that it is not attractive, and would change the character of Benita Beach. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Carolyn Gallagher from Cedar Creek, speaking as a private resident of Benita Springs on 6A. The process of getting considered for an overpass started years ago, and I'm concerned that there have been no formal programs, or formal public forums with briefings and discussions about the overpass until today, and I feel that is really wrong. Now we are on the verge of getting an overpass regardless of the residents' desires. I am afraid, I am really afraid, that the overpass is a done deal. I'm from the Washington DC area, always in the top 10 cities for bad traffic. There is no rush hour in DC. It's an all-day traffic jam and unending red lights. The overpasses on DC's high-speed Beltway haven't helped the traffic jams. They just expanded them. I remember how long it took to finish the area they call the mixing bowl. It's a part of the Beltway near Springfield, Virginia. Traffic was snarled for years during construction. When it was finished, it was even worse. Four to six lanes of bumper-to-bumper traffic trying to enter and exit at the same spot, creating a huge parking lot. Lots of confusion and accidents, too, happened. It is only one of the many overpasses on the Beltway. They are all ugly and confusing. I avoided any businesses near them because it was impossible to figure out how to find my way through the mazes of roads and one-way streets. We have a lovely old Florida-style city here, and can see the sky and enjoy the environment. Most of us who have come here are thrilled to be away from that kind of traffic described above. One of our pleasures is that on a bad day, it is better than a good day in DC. Waiting for an extra light cycle at the intersection of Benita Beach Road and 41 is a small price to pay for the open skies, natural beauty, and sunshine we enjoy here. In looking at this overpass issue, don't forget where you came from. I am asking you to uphold your previous vote and say no to the overpass. And if that means no to the study and data collection, so be it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Dan Jasper, 3320 Glen Karen Court in Benita Springs.
Dan, could you pull that microphone up to you? You're a tall guy. There you go. Thank you very much.
Dan Jasper, 3320 Glen Karen Court in Benita Springs.
Excellent.
My comments are, you know, opposition to the proposed study or flyover. I've looked at what I think are the flyovers in Lee County, excluding those that are involved with the bridges over Kaluushahachie, or the bridges that are tied into I-75. There are four of them in Lee County that I'm aware of. I would ask the council to look at the one at Summerlin and San Carlos. In my previous life, I had a business location there. The Vibrant Center was Winn-Dixie anchored, Lee County Sheriff's Department, and Lee County's election commissioners had an office there. That center today is totally vacant on the southeast corner of Summerlin and San Carlos. I'm convinced, in my mind, the same thing would happen to Benita Beach Road and 41 if that flyover happens at that location. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Jeremy France, representing the Conservancy of Southwest Florida. I'm gonna speak on two issues briefly. We're in support of Consent Agenda Item B, authorization for the mayor to send a letter to the board of the South Florida Water Management District in support of funding for Southern Critical Crew. The Conservancy hopes the council agrees, excuse me, approves authorizing the mayor to send this letter. Southern Critical Crew is shovel-ready, and it's simply waiting for funding to be included in the district's budget. Implementation of the project is an important piece of the water puzzle for the city, and sending a letter to the district will help bring this project to their attention as they continue budgeting for the next fiscal year. So it is timely to send that letter now. The other item I wanted to speak to was 14C, to proceed to draw up a contract with the Regional Planning Council for a two-phased Spring Creek Restoration Plan. And we commend Councilman Gibson for including this on the agenda. In January, when the public was, when the project was initially brought before the council, the Conservancy spoke in support of hiring the RPC to create a Spring Creek Restoration Plan. The principal RPC staff members to work for the project were designated as Jim Beaver and David Crawford, both eminently qualified to do this work. And obviously, the council agreed, since you voted unanimously to proceed with the contract. The Conservancy was surprised to hear several months later that this contract was never executed, and that the city was instead narrowing the focus to a dredging project. While dredging may be one component of managing Spring Creek, we concur with Councilman Gibson that an overall management and restoration plan is needed, and looking at dredging only addresses one portion of the more comprehensive Spring Creek management process. So we ask that council direct staff to proceed with executing the RPC contract, as you unanimously voted to do so on January 15th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
I am Vicki DeMayo. I've been here for 22 years, and I live in District 3. I also work in District 5. I've owned a business here for 16 years. My business is right across the street in Sunshine Plaza. For, I've also been, experienced the growth and the traffic here for the last 22 years, but I can also tell you, in the last seven years, the experience that I've had with the traffic has only let my business prosper. So, you know, we've really enjoyed, you know, the prosperity from the traffic. And the traffic, I see it as basically being 11 months out of the year. We've got half of January when we really start booming, through February, March, and by first week of April, everybody's gone, and the traffic's gone. People sit in my chair, and the biggest complaint that I hear is the timing of the traffic light at Benita Beach Road and 41. That's the biggest complaint that I hear all year long. So, you know, I really oppose the flyover, and that's the biggest complaint I have, is, you know, probably, that's the biggest complaint my clients have. And, you know, the fact that the monstrosity of having this big cement structure going over Benita Beach Road and 41, and the loss of all those businesses, I can't see any good coming from it. It'll just lose, you know, just a lot from, you know, our community. And we all moved here to come to this wonderful beach community, and it's a tourist town, and tourist towns bring traffic, and that's what you just have to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
My name is Gene Schmidt. I've been a 34-year resident of Lee County, the last 12 here in Benita Springs. I'm an architect. During that period of time, I practiced architecture in the area and have designed any number of buildings that you would recognize. Although I'm not trained as a planner, I got into a lot of land planning as an adjunct to my architectural work, and as a result, I think I have a sense of the profession of land-use planning, probably better than the average person, simply because of that kind of experience. I came here today with a list of notes of things I wanted to cover. Some have been covered already, so I'm gonna add lib and maybe build off of some of the things that have been said. As you do the PD and E study, you need to understand one thing about it. Once the data is gathered, and you go on to the next step, and you begin to summarize that data and make recommendations, you need to understand that the people who will be doing that are either highway engineers, or they are influenced very strongly by highway engineers. These are people who make their living designing roads and bridges, and yes, flyovers as well. They love those because they're big, expensive projects. It's sort of like you going to the shoe store and talk about shoes. Obviously, you're gonna get sold a pair of shoes. You do the study, obviously, you're gonna get sold something big time. It's gonna be there. I would submit there are any number of on-grade things that can be done that would improve the traffic situation. The idea of a tower was brought up by a gentleman a few moments ago. I would add to that, with today's technology, a series of cameras and one person sitting at a computer, maybe in City Hall, could handle that just as effectively, and very inexpensively, and I think that could be combined with a number of on-grade improvements that would be both cost-effective and effective in terms of handling traffic. In terms of the impact zone, should you get into a position to do a flyover, the negatives are obvious. One that has not been mentioned, it has about a quarter-inch impact zone in all directions.
Quarter-mile?
Pardon me?
Quarter-mile?
I'm sorry, did I?
Say quarter-inch.
A quarter-mile, I'm sorry.
On the map. I'm a contractor. You can't fool me with that kind of stuff, right?
Wrong scale. About a quarter of a mile in all directions is the impact zone, and yes, that is the kiss of death for local business. But also, if you happen to own real estate in that area, the market value of that real estate takes a nosedive, there's no question about it. A year or two down the road, the result of that is the city is realizing less tax income, less revenue, because the value of those properties has dropped, and ultimately, you have to recognize that in the, in the tax structure. Those are the negatives. The positive side, yes, it moves traffic a little better. You may gain a light or two during a season, but only during the season. With that, I thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Yes, I'm John Calabria from Spanish Wells. I've spoken to this fine group. I would say to you that I can't really add too much to what this fine group of people have said, except to say, number one, we had a vote five to two. Why are we talking about it? Why are we having this discussion at this meeting? Secondly, to those of you who know what we went through with the homeless shelter, I assure you, this will be equal to, if not even worse. Why are we wasting taxpayer money on a study when the residents do not want it, the council members do not want it? Why? Maybe the mayor could explain to us why we're doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, council, and fellow Benetians, for the record, my name's Jesse Purdon, District 2. I'm here to discuss the vote happening later this evening on the BD and E study, also affectionately referred to as the flyover study. Last time I addressed this council, I backed an initiative that protected the integrity of the very important I-75 corridor. I've been on record speaking out against the number of dollar stores in Old 41, and I've participated in forums on the vision of the downtown of our future. And each and every one of these opinions, I have sided with what is best to represent Benita and all that Benita has to offer. Again, I do that tonight. I urge you to kill the study. I urge you to chop the head off the snake now, so we don't have to address the flyover later. It's an all-or-nothing study, so if the potential outcome is something that we are not willing to entertain, let's not go down the road to begin with. We have a looming DRGR debate. We have some very important decisions in regards to the downtown area, and we have some very serious water issues. Let's not add this to the pile. With all due respect to ultimatums, and with all due respect to state and federal dollars, I say they can keep them. I would never willingly trade our sovereignty at the risk of jeopardizing our small-town charm. If we cannot come together as a council, I don't know what makes anyone think that adding an even larger government body to the mix will increase the level of productivity for what should be a local decision. A flyover is not good for business, it's not a good direction for our city, and it's not the will of the people. I urge you to unanimously kill the study and put this to bed once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Mohsen Sali. I used to be a consultant for the city of Benita Springs. And...
Boy, you're sorry you're not that now, huh?
I was just wondering about that. I've been following this from the sidelines, really. And in the spirit of full disclosure, I was a member of a team that also wanted to do the study. And I can share this with you, that when we were looking into doing the study, doing nothing was one of the options. Looking at demand-side solutions, which basically means doing the most with the least amount of pavement, was another option. Anything from, you know, trying to convert trips, anything that would reduce the volume. And at the same time, we were mindful of the fact that, you know, delays that we're experiencing right now at the intersection, and the impact it has on quality of the air that we breathe. And, you know, let's not forget that, you know, these are things that, with sea level rising issues, with climate change, these are things that should really be taken into account. And we feel that, or we failed while we were, you know, doing our letter of response to FDOT to be, you know, the team to do it, to look at all the options. And, you know, the fact that now it seems that everybody's focusing on just one extreme of this, which is a flyover, is really missing the point. There are a lot of other options that can be looked at. You know, it's an opportunity in disguise, really, that should be taken full advantage of by allowing this study to proceed. So that's really my suggestion to you. Thanks.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, please.
Fred Forbes, Benita Springs resident. First of all, I want to say that there's two sides to this, apparently, although suddenly, everybody on city council isn't for a flyover, but some are for the study. However, this has been a flyover since 2005. The records will show that's when the early requests started going in, and it really heated up when strangely, College Parkway Flyover got canceled. And on tape, MPO staff says, "The people from Benita Springs requested a flyover study." Now, that's fine. Somehow, after that, in the city's budget, a flyover or overpass appears. Then, also, I think in the Lee County or MPO budget, I don't think that's right yet.
I don't know, it seems right to me, but... I'm just teasing you. Wait, 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 it's out of control.
Anyway.
Oh, there you go. Go ahead.
I think that today you're going to hear a number of things that may, you need to think about some things. Number one, as someone else correctly pointed out, five of you voted, "We don't want to study if a flyover is going to be in the mix", which it has to be because of the federal funds. Yet, FDOT awarded the contract around middle of March, I believe. We've been told that if they do the study, and a flyover is the intended option that comes out of it, that if we say no, we're not going to get one. Well, guess what? We've been through three governors to date, four different secretaries of FDOT, I'm sure a similar number of district secretaries, and none of these can make a commitment to you, because when this thing would probably get funded would be four, five, six years from now, could even be 10 years. So you, none of that is going to work. And all I can tell you is if the PD and E study gets completed, and if the flyover, which is referred to in some of the documentation, as the ultimate improvement at the intersection, is built, I mean, is funded by FD, or by DOT, it's going to be like a train going 300 mile an hour, and if it was an unanimous vote that we don't want it, the chance that that's going to work is slim. And there's nobody in this room that can give you that guarantee. It can't be done, because they won't be here to enforce whatever guarantee that they offer you. So I would urge you to just remember that if, the best way to do this is get this thing stopped now. Now, the other thing, there's a process that FDOT has, which is called the EDTM process. And that process, one of its primary purposes is to put out different concepts that may come out of a future study like this PD and E. And the other main part of that is to get a lot of public input, so that the options that would create a problem will be called out. There was little or no public input from the Benita Springs residents, and I believe that a good bit of city council never had a chance to make input on specifically a study of a PD, a PD and E study possibly being approved with a flyover as a required option. Now, I think that that would be one thing FDOT may want to look at. It could be that the way the processes are done when you get into an MPO situation, that there doesn't tend to be the amount of public input in the early phases that you would get into in the standard FDOT projects. So I hope that you all vote to say no to the study, and I think all the comments were very good tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Don Thompson. I've been a resident here in Benita Springs for over 40 years now, and I'm commenting on item 6A, which relates to the Benita Beach Road-US-41 intersection study, or I guess PDE, not flyover study. I'd like to start with a quote from an A. Huxley in the 1900s, and that is, "Facts do not cease to exist because they are ignored." And I'll repeat that. "Facts do not cease to exist because they are ignored." I understand that the city's been attempting to persuade FDOT to move this intersection study up on the priority list for years, and I've heard several people say that earlier. I also understand that the study will review and consider all options, not just the flyover. As a matter of fact, I understand primarily they're going to look at what are the facts, and what, if any, improvements will be necessary. I understand they'll be looking at from doing nothing, all the way to possibly doing a flyover. I think it's fair to say that virtually all of us here do not want to see a flyover, including me. Likewise, however, I think it's fair to say that none of us here want to see nothing done. I suggest that we don't lose fact of the point that this is just a study. It's the council, the council and the residents are not agreeing to commit to anything. In fact, it sounds like we're all committing that we don't want to see a flyover, but we're simply asking for the study to be done and then be presented with the options. Let's find out what all the facts and all the alternatives are. I suggest that we all should support a full review and investigation of all facts before making any decisions. I think it would be a disservice to the future council, this council, and the citizens if we all limit the review and only consider facts we like, and ignore, and not consider facts that we don't like. We've got to look at and consider everything. I see this as a matter of public health, safety, and welfare. It's not, and should not be, an emotional or a political issue. Let the process work. I urge the council to look not a year down the road, not two years or five years, look down the road 15 and 20 years, and let's do everything in your power to understand all the facts by having the study done and then make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Please come forward.
Good evening, gentlemen, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for this opportunity. First of all, I'd like to give you what I think are important disadvantages to flyovers. Number one, it could be considered an ugly monument in a sleepy, beautiful fishing village. Number two, if you prefer, it could be an ugly monument in a lovely retirement golfing community in southwest Florida. Also, mass destruction of established commercial businesses is a disadvantage. Unnecessary spending of tax dollars when the people don't want it is a disadvantage. There is an advantage, one less stoplight. That is the only advantage that I can think of. Also, can you imagine if the state highway department, whose responsibility is US-41, and Lee County Department of Transportation, whose responsibility is Benita Beach Road, as it's a county road, and the Benita Springs City Council ever trying to cooperate on such a development as this flyover? It might end up to be more of a turmoil than the statement, "If you like your doctor, you can keep your doctor." Most of you know that there is a Lee County Metropolitan Planning Organization. Each community has representatives and that attend those meetings and are part of that committee. The committee also has two advisory committees with appointed unpaid citizen members. These advisory committees are, one, a technical advisory committee, and two, a citizens advisory committee. I've been fortunate to, for about five years, to have served on a citizens advisory committee. These committees study all county transportation issues. We are supported by a professional staff, some of them are here this evening, I see. Glad to see that. We meet monthly and forward our findings and decisions to the MPO for their consideration. We are involved in roads, transportation, roads and auto transportation, commercial road transportation issues, walking paths, bike paths, flight transportation issues, bus and trolley issues, train transportation issues. In my term of service, we have, counting this particular flyover situation, we have looked at three flyover proposals out of the many thousands of issues. None of them have passed. There were three scenarios appointed by your committee that's made this study. One did not have a flyover involved. Both the technical committee and the citizens advisory committee voted, if there was a study, that was the one to use, because we did not, and we do not, want a flyover, and was passed on to MPO for their information. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, please. Come forward.
Good evening. My name is Linda Schwartz. I live in Cedar Creek and have been a full-time resident of Benita Springs since 2001. I'm here to urge city council to pull the plug on the flyover study like they did in January 2014 for the same reasons that were articulated then, which were, we don't want the intersection study at Beach Road and 41 if a flyover is required, which it is. We want local control. Pulling the plug now is the only way to ensure that. And a flyover is not consistent with our vision statement in our comprehensive plan for the city. We don't need to waste federal dollars on something we don't want. Most of my other comments have already been made by others, so I'll go on to the second issue, which is, I want to talk about Spring Creek, which is also at that same city council meeting. I want to thank the city, and Matt Feeney in particular, for the work that has been completed so far in terms of contracting for the bathymetric study, and for the working with the DEP on the permit for trimming. I do support the need for a comprehensive study of Spring Creek to formulate an overall management plan for the entirety of the creek. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening.
Evening.
Bill Banfield. I've lived and worked in the local unincorporated Lee County for about six years, and proudly purchased my home in District 2 seven weeks ago.
Hey, welcome.
Very happy to be here in the city, and...
Boy, you picked a great time to get here, didn't you?
It's fascinating. But I am glad, because it's something that I've looked at a lot, also being a former resident of Washington DC. And the one thing I know is the only fact regarding the improvements to the Benita Beach Road and Route 41 intersection that I have any level of certitude is that by the time they cut the ribbon, it will be an entirely different mayor and city council because of term limits. These studies take years. The budgeting, years. Permitting, years. The actual construction. It's not even estimated to be done for at least a decade. And by rejecting the study, at this point, you're rejecting the information within that study that could give us an answer that perhaps is not the flyover. Perhaps they trifurcate the road farther east. We have no idea, because we are just simply saying no. And it's easy to say no, and it feels good to say no, and it feels like we're taking power. But it is rarely the right course of action. I request you take an informed and fact-based approach, because this will affect not only the current residents of Benita Springs, but for those that will be impacted by the eventual improvements when they're completed in the next decade. The sole manner you can make the informed decision is by thorough review of the facts that will be in the project development and environment study. I do not want a flyover, but I know that the answers to our problems are within that study. This process was initiated years ago due to the good stewardship of previous civic leaders that recognized the future needs of the citizens of Benita Springs. It is the mark of an educated mind to be able to entertain a thought without accepting it. I urge you to be educated by the facts in the study. I urge you to let the process that began be allowed to be completed. The simple endorsement of the project development and environment study is not an endorsement of flyovers. It will contain the information needed to make an informed, responsible, and educated decision regarding the future improvements of Benita Beach Road and Route 41. I respectfully urge you to be informed to the greatest extent possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Heather Thompson. I'm 25 years old, and I'm a lifelong resident of Benita Springs. I'm here in support of the flyover study. Do I want a flyover? No, I don't think anybody here does, and clearly, no one here does. But I'm urging council to take a look at everything that's going to be presented before them. Some of the comments that I've read and heard are negative, some of them are positive. I just want everyone to take a step back, remove emotion, and see what it is. Just look at the facts. What about during season, when we're almost two times, three times, four times more full than we are at this time of year? A flyover or any type of traffic resolution could definitely assist in that. A lot of people who live here travel to Naples and Fort Myers to go to work. That intersection is a major throwaway. And I can tell you from experience, after 25 years and having driven since I was 16 years old, I've sat through three, four, five lights, and that's awful. years old, I've sat through three, four, five lights, and that's awful. I also say that Benita Springs, we're trying to bring in a lot more business to the area. Why would a business want to move here to this area if we don't have the proper infrastructure to support more business coming in here, more people moving here? So I'm not saying that we want to flyover. Obviously, we've made that clear. But I would definitely say that for future generations, for people like me who want to be here for a long time, we definitely need to just consider the facts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Scott Duval. For the record, I am not here for the Water Task Force. I'm not commenting on anything related to the Water Task Force, so...
Aren't you happy?
...in my capacity with that, I'm not here today to talk about that, thankfully, although we do support what you're doing with the Southern Crew. But I'm here as a, somebody who works in the Beechway Building, which happens to be at the corner of Benita Beach Road and 41, just west of Walgreens. My window looks out on Benita Beach Road, and I often hear sirens, ambulances and fire trucks coming down the road. And in season, it's heartbreaking to see those fire trucks and ambulances, lights blaring at a standstill, because they can't get through traffic. I've seen them drive over the median before and do anything they can to get to where they're going, to respond to whatever emergency they're responding to. The great thing is, we have unanimity. Nobody wants a flyover. But what we do want is a fix to the traffic problem that's at the corner of Benita Beach Road and US 41. The PD and E study will, as a significant part of that study, ask for and have opportunity for public comment. So all these people who are objecting to a flyover today and have in the past will continue to object to a flyover as part of that study process. I would welcome and encourage all those people to participate in that, because I don't want to flyover either. My office is right there. I'll be impacted more so than a resident on the other side of I-75. With that being said, we also started a school here in Benita Springs this year. It will be opening in September, and that's going to be off Vanderbilt Drive at the beautiful First Baptist Church of Benita Springs. So we also need good transportation, good corridor there for that as well. So I've got a vested interest in that road in particular. I drive it every day. Would really hate to see the study killed for the sake of the fact that we all don't want a flyover. That's indisputable. I'm reminded of a quote by Andrew Lang, a Scottish poet, who said that politicians often use statistics in the same way a drunk uses lamp posts for support rather than illumination. I would encourage you to go forward with the study, so at least you could be illuminated by the facts that will come out of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Congressman.
Hey, hey, guys. I am Kirk Lawson from District Three, and proud to be a supporter of an excellent man and an excellent city councilman and an excellent friend. And thank you. I have a couple of comments for the record. Number one, having listened to many of our residents here, I want to say thank you for your care of our federal dollars. And with a $17 trillion deficit, I want to say, whatever the decision here is, I'm glad that folks are taking the federal budget into account as well, as I certainly will as part of my new calling. Secondly, I want to say that I appreciate the disagreements, and I think that this is a good process, and it's how, you know, I got involved in the first place. And I particularly want to thank those from the MPO that decided to come. I think it's a great thing when they take their own time and come here and listen to the citizens. And then whatever decision is made is the best decision. So I appreciate you all making the journey for that. A year ago, my dad and I waited out in the Gulf of Mexico, and we couldn't see our feet, even though we were in just above our knees. And my dad said, "Kirk, will you do something about this?" I said, "Dad, what do you want me to do? I'm retired down here with you." And he said, "Get involved. Just get involved." Dad, I got involved. And I didn't know at the time that I got involved with my friends on what we believe in, that it would lead to being the elected official in Congress for Benita Springs. At that time, it was just about local issues. And so that was a big surprise. But even a bigger surprise I want my friends to know has been the great joy and pleasure of those of working with you all on what's important to us. And those in front of me and those behind me that are my friends will always be my friends, and I appreciate that. And I know from the bottom of my heart that I wouldn't have been elected to Congress without my friends and those that supported me. And I don't forget. I am often asked, particularly in Benita Springs, "Will you forget us when you go to Congress?" Well, my answer to that is simple. I will represent everybody in our district, old and young, rich and poor, male and female, whites, African Americans, and those that speak Spanish. But will I ever forget Benita Springs? Of course not. And so to my friends and everyone in Benita Springs, I end today by expressing my deep humility and appreciation for your support for a calling that feels so heavy on my shoulders someday. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
He cleans up pretty nice, doesn't he?
Yeah.
The last time you were in here, I think it was a T-shirt and shorts and Converse shoes, and you drove your F-150 with your gun rack in the back. I asked our city clerk to make a copy of something for you, and that is, by the way, Martha Simons, you know who I am, resident of Benita Springs since 1989 and a former member of city council, District Five, who made the motion to kill this study. Okay. I asked, Dr. Grubbs did a study in Fort Myers about the Colonial Expressway. And I've asked our city clerk to give you the conclusion, because it's a very big study. But if you want to have the whole study, I'd be happy to have you get that. Just ask, and it shall be yours. Okay. So I think we're right to have this conversation. In 2006, I asked, "Can we have a conversation about this flyover thing? Because I heard about this." And I was like, "What?" Because I read about it in the newspaper. And in the Naples Daily News, we all remember Brad Kane, I think. Well, not all of us, but some of us do. Brad Kane reported that the Lee County MPO wanted to have a flyover at Benita Beach Road and 41. And Debbie Tower spoke about it in the paper. Oh, I have it right here. Hang on a sec. The Lee County Metropolitan Planning Organization has already pegged the intersection, this is April 17, 2006, as needing an interchange where US 41 would be elevated and drivers would need ramps to get to and from Benita Beach Road. It's a flyover study, folks. We can do other things, and we do need a solution. I heard the last city council meeting where the mayor brought up the idea of, oh, my gosh, the MPO or the FDOT could categorize Benita Beach Road as constrained. That's a great idea, actually. It's a good idea, because in our comp plan, it says about Benita Beach Road and US 41, oops, let's push on the button, in the comp plan, in our vision statement, which a substantial number of, the majority of citizens agreed with, this strong basic statement, that welcoming features should clearly announce to travelers the location of the city limits. US 41 and Benita Beach Road should be beautiful commercial parkways to be enjoyed by Benita Springs residents as well as those traveling through the city. That's in our comp plan. We're supposed to do that. That's what we're supposed to do. So what can we do? There are some solutions. I mean, if you have a flyover, you're going to have to do some taking in the front. But you know what? You have service roads in the back. Is there a way to be able to use the service roads? Because I drive them all the time, probably you do too, to get away from the traffic? To use those service roads to make as well as parking lot accessibility agreements with the businesses? Uh-oh, time's a-flying. Okay. So please read this. What it says in the very beginning is that the PD and E study failed to address the impacts on the economy, businesses, employment, property values. Seventeen jobs per business in this study were going to be lost. Okay, that's not good. Also, at the MPO meeting, Mr. Haddaway, and I have to thank the FDOT, because they only did what they were asked to do. It's not your fault. We should have had this discussion, but it kept being put off and put off and put off. So if I could just have, just a second, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Haddaway said that there's nothing else that could really fix this according to the parameters of the study that we have. Really, we're just going to be putting off the inevitable. Well, I don't believe that. Sarasota is doing it. They can do it. They constrain their US 41. They have a can-do attitude. We have a can-do attitude. Thanks to Carl and other folks, we can do it too. So I ask you to please ask the MPO to stop this study, and let's start afresh, and I think we can do a great job. Read this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I hope I don't take other people's stuff up here. Thank you. Thank you. As if you need that. Appreciate it. I forgot to ask also, I may be in the middle. I'll come back in the middle. Okay, thanks. Dave Crawford.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you.
Ben Hershinson, Avenue Drive. Several years ago, I went to a meeting, professional meeting in Washington, DC, and I went with some of my colleagues to the National Aquarium. And one of the first things I saw at the National Aquarium was this round tank, probably had hundreds, if not thousands, of sardines all swimming in the same direction. There's this one lonely sardine going like this. And my colleague says, "Hey, Ben, that's you." So here I am tonight to kind of go on that minority side, and I say, "Please support the study." What is it we want to learn? Well, I want to learn, frankly, what the future population is going to do and the traffic flow with respect to that intersection. So we need to find out as much as we can. And how do you do that? By saying no. You can't learn anything by saying no. So therefore, I say, "Let's research the issue. Let's look at it intelligently." And as I think, how often do we listen to a minister give an invocation, "But discern and decide." Two beautiful words. That's what I hope the council will do and the state will follow through in doing. We need to analyze the data and the information, and then the decision is made appropriately, without emotion, and dealing strictly with facts. So again, being the contrarian that I am, and those of you who know me pretty well, that's nothing unusual. That's the kind of role that I take. But seriously, I would like very much to see the study performed. I'm anxious to see the results. Just imagine if people 25, 30 years ago sat in this room similar to this and said, "We do not need to build an interstate," which has come to be known as I-75. It is the job of a council of any government agency to look forward, to use data. We are growing. I don't know how many units are now on the docket for Benita Springs. I would guess maybe 1,000, 1,500, I don't know, single-family residences. Each residence is going to have two cars, probably. And then you have the impact of a huge corporation hurts coming here. More cars. We want to see our economy grow. We want to see jobs. Well, folks, you need the infrastructure to support it. So I'll conclude by saying thank you all very much for the opportunity to address you, and I urge the study, go forward.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Joe Mazurk was president of BGM Consulting. Forty-six-year resident of Lee County and a longtime observer of the city of Benita Springs, going back to the original feasibility study. I've had a long affinity for this community, because when I did the original feasibility study, it wasn't due to a sentinel event. There was no emotion. It was a business-like approach as to looking at being a city or remaining unincorporated Lee County. And during the eight years I was the government affairs person for the Benita Springs Chamber of Commerce, watching you here in these chambers, I had additional respect for the professional and the collegial way in which you interacted with each other and the public. A little bit about my background before I speak on item 6A. As an elected official for 10 years serving on the MPO, I served as Chair of the MPO three different times. I was appointed by the governor, confirmed by the Senate, to be a member of the Florida Transportation Commission for three years, serving as Vice Chair, and finally, as Chair at the end of my term. I consider myself a transportation junkie. A PD and E is a 20-year planning horizon. To take any possible solutions off the table is like sending a gunfighter into a fight with three chambers empty. Leave all the options on the table. This is a 20-year planning solution that you're looking at. This is not the traffic that's there today. This is not the traffic that's going to be there in five years from now. I want to specifically address what happened in Cape Coral on a very similar issue. We did a roadway through the city where we intersected Santa Barbara and Veterans Parkway. Planned for, developed, bought the land for upfront for an elevated interchange, split-grade interchange. Had an elected body with a group of citizens saying they don't want it. They took it off the table. They voted. After it was planned, PD and E and done, took it off the table. So the fact that you can't do it after the PD and E is not true. You can. But unfortunately, now, just 18 months later, the citizens of Cape Coral are starting to realize that the traffic at that intersection is approaching gridlock. And now their elected officials are coming back to the county, saying, "We want the elevated interchange back in place that was originally planned." I want to talk about specifically the reality of a split-grade interchange. Yes, the immediate area will change. It's going to change from impulse retail to destination retail. The Walgreens on the corner with easy ingress and egress will no longer be successful at an elevated interchange, split-grade interchange. But other destination commercial can be successful, as it is at the interchanges in Cape Coral, at Del Prado, and Veterans. I also want to warn you that to do nothing is to not consider the reality of gridlock on two of the three major commercial corridors in Benita Springs. Think about the concept of traffic avoidance. People will go away from gridlock. They will stay in North Collier. They will go to Estero. They will abandon your commercial corridors. That's something you need to consider if you're going to go with no study whatsoever. I would respectfully recommend that you go forward with the study with all options available.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Ron Puer, Benita Springs, and also still involved with TAG, Taxpayer Action Group. I'm not going to improvise, and I'm going to read from something. And Mayor, just, I want to reflect on something that you were quoted in saying in one of the publications about addressing the council, your fellow council here, about something about your hearing them say, "You've got yours. Don't you want anybody else to come in?" I've been here for 22 years, 14 of which have been a city, and I've been waiting for someone to say, "Let's put on the brakes and stop taking from Lee County and the state those directives that used to govern us in the first place before cityhood." And this very much is part of what we're talking about here today. When you take money from the folks that are here tonight visiting, we must play by their rules. That's a community-accepted notion. However, it is also worth remembering that they get their money from us. And the people in the room who are here today to object to the thought of a flyover, well, we're talking about FDOT, an organization with a past that some of us have seen unfold over the years, an outfit known to engage in buying 10 times more product than required or even necessarily needed in our locale, the same where transportation officials that build roads taking one to two years longer than is rational in many people's minds and to get the job finished. We're also witnessing, right here in our own backyards of Collier and Lee, those things that have taken prolonged periods of time for them to do. But that does not necessarily reflect on their ability to raise a flyover at any time in the near or not-so-distant future. Today, we might hear members of the MPO, if that's who's here, or the Highway Department, FDOT, make some... FDOT, make some promises and suggest that the, or attempt us as a matter of fact, and say, don't worry, a flyover is not going to be happening, at least not in your lifetime. I say, don't believe it. And if they want to put something in writing, then perhaps you'll entertain that, but I wouldn't fall necessarily for that one either. There are many controversial issues on tonight's agenda, two more before the next public input allowed. The billboard lawsuit. City is not in the business of guaranteeing profit to either business or residents. Mayor, you've been on the council for the longest period, ever since cityhood. And as you know, TAG advised restricting billboards for nearly as many years as you've been sitting on your hands regarding the issue. And do whatever needs to be done to protect the city from any more intrusions by the company that now seeks to sue us. By the way, they do have the right to pick up the Piper signage dimensions, and we've been awfully generous with billboard companies over the years, so maybe this is something that they should swallow. And if it needs to go to court, maybe that should be pursued as well. The other matter has to do with democracy, often a word used by you and Councilman McIntosh with respect to what is going, continues to go on. That's an item as well on the agenda, with respect to annexation and annexing properties and continue to do so.
You guys lost a state.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay, you guys lost it.
Not sitting on my hands. Take a seat.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is John Pano, CGT Kayaks. I have had the opportunity and privilege to meet each and every one of you guys. And one of the things I wanted to tell you is, 12 years ago approximately, I moved to Lee County. Last year, I moved to Benita Springs because I found it to be one of the most beautiful, one of the nicest cities that I've ever encountered. I love it here. I have to say that I respect and honor each and every one of you guys, and having held public office and myself, I know that you take great sacrifice and dedication in what you do. And I just wanted to say thank you, no matter what you vote today. I personally would be affected by a flyover. My business is right down there. There are several businesses along the east side of 41, from Crown Lake Road over to the Restor, that people have to do U-turns to get to all the time. Many people, once they do that and come into our lot, don't go back out into 41. They cut across the grass, and they cut across the parking lots to try to get to the service roads. I would urge you to look into connecting these parking lots and offering, I estimate 20 to 30% of the traffic turning at that turn would stop turning there and turn at the light just over the bridge, right by the Advanced Auto Parts Store there and the Restor. And they would use the parking lots to get up and access to those businesses along the way and help alleviate some of that traffic. That's all I had to say. Again, thank you for everything you guys have done.
Thank you, Mr. Pano. Anybody else this time, please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Donna Stone. I'm a full-time resident. I live on Bridgeford Avenue. I would like to speak against the impending study of a flyover bridge on Benita Beach Road. At the city council meeting on January 15th in 2014, the citizens did understand the ramifications of the study, and they were very outspoken in their opposition to the traffic study mandating a flyover bridge. The study is a take it or leave it on a flyover, and we voted, and you voted rather, to not do it. Ultimately, a council vote was taken and a five-to-do vote against the study was recorded. It is incomprehensible to me that certain members of our city council went against their mandated responsibility to represent and support the vote of the city council and the will of the citizens. They were mistaken in their reported comments that we as citizens and the city council did not fully grasp the whole picture of the issue. On the contrary, we do understand that a flyover would be devastating to the almost 50 businesses on both sides of Benita Beach Road and 41, from the city hall line down beyond the new Publix Plaza. If I were the head of the Chamber of Commerce, I would be asking the city council to do everything in their power to protect me from a project that would put me and my fellow business neighbors out of business. The businesses that are just now getting some of their customers back after the 41 expansion construction that took three years. As to the TV reports of the traffic nightmare, that is just false. I lived in the Boston area, as some of you can tell by my accent. Talk about traffic. If I was not heading to Maine on 1/28 by 3:30 in the afternoon, it was a parking lot. I went nowhere. So please, don't even consider that sitting through two lights is a traffic nightmare. You can do that in your sleep. That is something that you, that is not a nightmare by any means. That is something that you experience all the way up and down 41, from Naples to Fort Myers. Are we going to see flyovers all over and up and down 41 in the future? I hope not. As to the comment that the traffic was backed up to Big Hickory, when was that? During the 41 expansion? I have never seen it, and no one else that I asked ever did either. It is incomprehensible to me that certain members of our city council went against their mandated responsibility to represent and support the vote of the city council and the will of the citizens. In fact, they did everything in their power to do the opposite of what was mandated. They went out of their way to push the study through. If we cannot stop a study that was voted against, what chance do we have against the state saying, hey, this is a state road. We already paid for the study, and it mandated a flyover bridge, so the state is going ahead with the project. At this time, I ask at this time that the vote of the city council representing the taxpayer citizens be honored and the study be immediately canceled due to the refusal to remove the flyover mandated option of the grant. Again, the flyover bridge is not in my list of the top 100 things we need for Benita Springs. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker, please.
Good evening. Christine Ross, the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce in Benita Springs. And I'm here to encourage you this evening to support this study. It's important to figure out what the city's going to need 5, 10, 15, 20 years from now. I live in Benita Springs, and I don't want a flyover. I do want to have safety concerns considered. I would like us to speak to the police department and ask them how many times every week in season they have to come and stand on Benita Beach Road and put their physical bodies in the roadway to move traffic because it's backed up to the beach and on 41. They put their lives in danger. If you do not have the data to understand what's going on, and this study will take upwards of three years, Mike is going to be here. Some of you guys aren't going to be here. He's going to need to try to figure out how he's going to solve the problem of a congested intersection. It's a state highway. It's a safety issue. I understand that flyovers are unattractive. But as the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, I have to consider how people are going to get around that intersection for life and safety, for evacuation during hurricanes. Can you imagine what would happen if we don't improve that intersection in the future, 10 or 15 years from now? I would suggest that the business community would be right to be concerned about a flyover, but that's not a done deal. We need to have this study. We should not forego over $1 million of federal funding. How can you throw that back? We aren't going to be able to do this study ourselves five years from now when the intersection is in crisis. We are all for planning, and you need data in order to plan. Please do as Don Thompson suggested. Do show your leadership. Have some vision. Plan for the future of the health and safety of our community residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else at this time?
Thank you. Brian Filson, 28089 Vanderbilt Drive. I am speaking for myself in Nova Wealth Management. I have a business right down the road from there. We actually moved it from the Crexton Center, which is at the Riverview Boulevard. So when I think of FDOT and all that, I think of the Riverview light that's going in. We used to give directions to our clients to intentionally go to the next light and make a U-turn. That was a safety issue, and that's literally less than a mile down the road. So my question is, is that how come a study isn't important? And I agree, it might not be a study today. My question is, if not that, then what? I'm looking for a total plan. Pass today, tomorrow, what do we say then? Do we take safety into account? You know, what study are you going to do next? Because how do I, I mean, I moved my business from the Crexton Center because of that. I almost think that, you know, am I going to move it every three years because of, you know, the population, you know, increasing? I guess my question is also for the process here. You know, we just went through a long process with the DRGR. Believe me, I'm not bringing it up again. But my question is, we did data, more data, and then further data, saying we didn't get the right data. I don't know how we do a complete 180 in this situation and not follow that same, you know, maxim. For my industry, working for a financial planning firm, I can't imagine sitting down with a client and telling them it's okay to invest all their money into something their neighbor said without doing any sort of data research and then thinking that as a long-term plan. So I don't know your job. I thank you for your job, but I try to parallel it to mine, and I just, I can't understand not doing a study. If this isn't the study, then what is? You know, what do we do tomorrow? I'm looking for a long-term plan, just not one vote individually. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. Going, going, gone. All right. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. We really appreciate it. It's very helpful. I agree with everyone that, boy, it would have been nice to have this conversation quite some time ago. That's true. If anything is serious, true today, that is true. And at this time, we are due to have a discussion and presentation by FDOT. Hello. And by the way, everybody, I want to thank Larry Keiker, Commissioner. Thank you for being here. Don Scott. And thank you for bringing everybody along, Carmen, and everybody from FDOT, everybody from Lee DOT, Dave. Thank you all for being here and coming here to help us make this decision and help everyone to understand what's going on. And with that, I'll leave it up to you.
Good evening.
Those that are exiting, could you exit quietly, please? Thank you.
Good evening. Carmen Monroy, Florida Department of Transportation. Thank you for having this conversation with us. We welcome the opportunity to be able to address you and to speak a little bit more about what the study is entailing and what the conversation needs to be. I really had away the district secretary senses. Apologies. He had a prior commitment and couldn't make it this evening. He did ask me this morning in our conversation to relay that he did ask the MPO to bring this discussion further for a formal discussion at their next meeting. And we could have made a presentation today, but we thought it was important to be available to you and answer any questions that you may have, and just clarify some of the discussion that's already taken place.
Okay.
So with that, I'll entertain any questions that you have.
Okay. Council, questions? Yes, please.
Thank you for being here. I also want to thank Commissioner Larry Keiker. Met with him a few weeks back, and we discussed, you know, certainly I had concerns about the five-to-two vote and why this study is proceeding. And we had met, and he had sent out a note to all of us that we'd be meeting here July 2nd, based on everybody's schedule, and needs to be clarified so the council can get all the information, ask all the questions. We've had a good discussion here so far and look forward to this evening. And it's his belief that any decision that we make tonight at city council, either for a first time or a second time, as the case may be, that he believes the Lee MPO will honor that decision moving forward. So I'd like to commend him for that message that he sent to all of us in helping organize this meeting. I have looked through a lot of data, so I've put together a few pages here, so if you could just bear with me for a few minutes, I want to lay out some information and then have a discussion. Would that be okay?
Of course.
Okay. Want to express my appreciation for FDOT, particularly Secretary Prasad, for his offer, quite frankly, to shut this project down. He did say that in the past, quote-unquote. Particularly, I want to thank you for being responsive to our community's concerns. My understanding is that you have asked the MPO to formally address the question, as you've stated here, of the continuation of the PDNE study at the next meeting and take a formal vote. Would that be what you envision, a formal vote of the Lee MPO?
The district secretary has asked for direction from the MPO, yes.
Okay. And that would include a vote if somebody made a motion?
It would be up to the MPO to do that, yes.
Okay. I appreciate you doing that, but quite frankly, I don't think FDOT needs to wait because your next meeting's not until the end of August, correct?
That would be the Lee MPO, and yes, they are meeting in August.
Okay, so literally two months from now.
That's correct. The July, I believe, the Lee MPO is in recess for the month of July.
Okay, so between now and then, what would happen if nothing happened?
Well, we will continue with analysis. We have completed data collection at this time. We actually issued a notice to proceed in March to our consultant, who, the beginning process of that project development environment study is data collection. So we've completed some data collection, and we are in the analysis phase now. That will continue, and when that report is complete, it will come back to the MPO for further discussion.
Okay, so a five-to-two vote in January, you get to start up in March. We're going to take another vote here this evening. Yet the study's going to continue, and we can't address that one way or another for two full months?
So the city council provided a letter to FDOT that said that if the flyover option was to be a consideration or had to be an option, that the study should be discontinued. We do not, at this time, have an option to remove any option from consideration. The study has to go forward and evaluate all viable options. And that includes discussion of all of the alternatives that may be developed. That's why the beginning of that process is data collection. We need to understand the scope and the need at the intersection. We need to understand it regionally, which is why that discussion happens at the Lee MPO level.
Now, there is a MPO meeting next week, correct, of the officers? What would that be called? The executive committee? Okay. Could it be a possibility that we call an emergency meeting, a special meeting, whatever you want to call it, next week at this already scheduled meeting for a vote?
Essentially, what I told the district secretary is that we will bring it through the TAC and CAC first for their recommendation, which is August 7th, and then it will go to the MPO board on August 22nd. Obviously, we have the timeframe for advertising, but we need to bring it through our committees first.
Okay. All right. First of all, this would not be the first PDNE study, hypothetically speaking here, of course, we haven't voted again, of a flyover to be stopped in Lee County. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Just a few years ago, the county commissioners, I believe, and the MPO stopped an overpass study in Fort Myers on Colonial?
I believe that's correct.
So we're not in unprecedented waters here. We've also mentioned a study here in Cape Coral. And that study, just like this one, had a no-build option, correct?
All of the studies are required to have a no-build option.
Okay. So at that time, our colleagues on the county commission, listening to the people of Fort Myers, also asked for a resolution not to consider any flyovers in that corridor for 15 years. Is that right?
I'll defer to Lee County.
Well, he's not the entire county, but...
I'd be a lot bigger.
Indeed.
For the record, Dave Loveland, Lee County DOT. I don't believe the county commission adopted a resolution that said anything like that. Just to clarify, the PDNE study that was being done for Colonial that was halted was actually being done by the county, using county funds. Based on the discussion through the MPO process, the county chose to halt that study. In the Cape Coral side, there was a design study underway for an overpass at Veterans and Santa Barbara. And that same discussion through the MPO process at that same time also led the county to look at some alternatives and then decide to halt that study as well. But that was a county-funded study as well. The MPO, I don't know that they... The MPO, I don't know that they made a statement about limiting overpasses for a period of time.
Colonial, it was a section, but I don't remember.
Okay. So that, that was actually the MPO, it was not the county commission.
Okay, so I mean, I guess maybe just the bottom line was there, the study was stopped, correct? Okay, great. Well, really, here in Benita Springs, we're not asking for anything more. We're asking for the study to be stopped based on a previous vote and another vote that we will take this evening.
And...
We'd like you to honor this view, please, okay? We've already said it very clearly, as we said in January, we do not want this study to continue. Now, we're being asked to say it again. We do not want a PDNE study that contains a flyover option. It's really that simple. In this all-or-nothing study, that is what we're saying here. The public record at the MPO is full of plain and open documentation and talk about a flyover. In the interest of time, I'm just going to present a few examples, okay? In the minutes of a Lee MPO Citizens Advisory Committee meeting, held early in 2013, and, you know, which contained, among other things, the view that it makes more sense for US-41, not Benita Beach Road, to be the overpass. Here, you know, there was a questionnaire that URS Corporation, and you are in contract with this study with URS Corporation, is that correct?
They did the ETDM study, the early study that's done in advance of the PDNE.
Okay. So it was handed out to Collier County folks, Lee County folks, and the purpose was to get public input. Is that correct?
Yes, there was a component, actually, it was a presentation on this, the work that had been done related to the ETDM study, that efficient transportation decision-making component that comes in advance of the PDNE study that identifies our partners, our environmental partners, and helps us to understand the magnitude of the impact that this work would have.
Right, 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 okay. At one of the, at this MPO committee meeting, one member argued strongly that the overpass should have six lanes, should be six lanes wide, not four. The consultant advised them that early in the planning phase of the project, which was nine years ago, four, four lanes were assumed. Is that correct? Does that ring a bell?
I actually, I'm not sure what, what the consultant said.
Okay. Another member talked about, at length, how maybe some trees could be planted to try to soften the ugliness of an overpass. There was a discussion on how much right-of-way was needed. Another questioned why a flyover is being considered in Benita Springs when all over the country, smart cities are taking them down. Sound right?
It's possible that, that discussion took place as part of that, that analysis that is done in advance of the study.
Okay. One member asked a question, why are we considering a flyover when Lee County put a 15-year moratorium? Here again, discussion. The flyover moratorium, Lee MPO staff told, are only applied up in Fort Myers, not Benita Springs. And I have a quote here, "I know it is kind of funny," he said, "but Benita asked for this project right after the flyover moratorium was put in place." Ring a bell to anybody?
Well, to be, to be clear, these comments were associated with the ETDM presentation that was done to the, at the Lee MPO, and that worked through the Citizens Advisory Committee and the Technical Advisory Committee. The purpose of that ETDM study is to identify the largest impact, what would be the greatest impact, so that we can identify concerns early on in the process. That informs the PDNE process. That does not say that, that the preferred alternative, or the ultimate recommendation for the preferred alternative would be an overpass. We were simply considering what would have been of the largest impact in that area.
Okay. I believe there are three phases to this study, correct?
To the PDNE study.
Could you walk us through the three phases?
The, we're talking about the PDNE study.
Well, there's three, three phases. There's a plant, let's start with the planning screen. Was that started in 2005? Or did it start prior to that?
So, so, so to be clear, the ETDM process, which was the initial process that identifies this, reaches out to the community, identifies our environmental partners, so that we can assess the greatest impact. That ETDM process looks at the greatest footprint of what an improvement would be, would do. That informs the PDNE study, which is what we've undertaken, we're undertaking now. The first component of the PDNE process is data collection. It looks at what is happening at the intersection, what the needs are. We look dispassionately at what the impacts are regionally of that corridor and its relationship to the other transportation infrastructure. Once that data collection is done, then we can form alternatives. After the alternatives are formed, we look at every viable option and then determine what the impacts are, what the feasibility is, and what is the probability that it would be funded, that it would be programmed. All of that is taken into consideration, and we form a preferred alternative. That is then vetted with our federal partners, who can accept the study and can make recommendations or further comments on it. Then the future phases are programmed in, through the Lee MPO process.
So what phase, or what, where are we right now?
We are only in data collection at this point.
So that would be Phase 1?
Yes.
The planning screen?
Um, this, no, no, go ahead, if you can clarify.
ETDM, I don't know, from mid-'90s, I guess, is, you do a planning screen for ETDM on the long-range plan, but not on specific projects. But as a project gets programmed, then they do the analysis, it's called the programming screen. That's why that was done, when it was programmed in the work, work program, whatever that, 2013 was when we were doing it, but when it got into the work program, was moved up, that's why that was done at that time.
Okay, okay, great. I'm going to play a short excerpt from one of the MPO committee meetings that I believe captures the essence of this discussion. The auto, the audio file is available for public online. It's one minute and 52 seconds. The speaker of this, I believe, is Lauren Brooks from the URS Corporation, and this is from a March 7th, 2013 meeting. And actually, I might play it twice. I'm not sure if this is going to work real well, but from March 7th, 2013.
I'm going to present some, some of our initial thoughts on why we feel this project is needed, that we would certainly love to hear your input.
Can you hear that?
So the, this project did go through a planning screen back in '05. The purpose is to provide a new four-lane overpass. This project will go through the programming screen, but the PDNE study is what will determine, you know, which road should be elevated, whether it's 41 or Benita Beach. So we're not at that stage yet. The project is located in the city of Benita Springs, near the Collier County border, and you can tell from the aerial, it's within a pretty dense urban area. So our, what we think the primary purpose is, it's, I guess, the interchange will, or the overpass will help alleviate traffic and accommodate projected travel demand. So that's, I think, what the, the primary purpose is. Some of the secondary goals are to enhance regional mobility, improve safety conditions, and also multimodal access. So in, in going with the purpose, these are the supporting needs. Capacity and transportation demand, I think, is, is probably the top need. You know, so the project is intended to increase operational capacity to meet the future travel demand. System linkage, improve north-south access. This is mainly, if 41 was elevated, I think it would improve north-south access between the three adjoining counties. And then if Benita Beach is elevated, or even if 41 is elevated, it'll help relieve the congestion and improve direct access to beaches and tourist destinations.
I'd like to play that just one more time, and, you know, at the risk of trying to not sound partial here, that sounds pretty partial to me.
Well, could, could you explain to us who that was that was talking?
Was that Lauren Brooks from URS Corporation?
I believe that's the consultant that was presenting the ETDM process as it was going forward. And it, that is what they were discussing at that moment, and I wasn't present at that meeting, I apologize. What they were discussing was the impact and what possibilities were, what options could be further developed and explored in the PDNE study.
So this is, this is a matter of context. I want everybody to realize this.
That's correct.
But it doesn't sound like a turn lane, or a signal, or a light, or a secondary turn?
Well, to be fair, she's talking about one particular option that could be developed, and what the imprint and what the impact would be in that section, and how it could possibly be an option. It could be a reliever. It had to be further explored. And she talks about the next PDNE study, looking at those alternatives, if that was the solution.
Okay, I think I'm just going to play it one more time, if you'll bear with me. It's a minute and 52 seconds.
Counsel, Counsel, did you, did you hear this?
I'm going to present some...
You need to hear it again?
...initial thoughts on why we feel this project is needed, that we would certainly love to hear your input. So the, this project did go through a planning screen back in '05. The purpose is to provide a new four-lane overpass. This project will go through the programming screen, but the PDNE study is what will determine, you know, which road should be elevated, whether it's 41 or Benita Beach. So we're not at that stage yet. The project is located in the city of Benita Springs, near the Collier County border, and you can tell from the aerial, it's within a pretty dense urban area. So our, what we think the primary purpose is, it's, I guess, the interchange will, or the overpass will help alleviate traffic and accommodate projected travel demand. So that's, I think, what the, the primary purpose is. Some of the secondary goals are to enhance regional mobility, improve safety conditions, and also multimodal access. So in, in going with the purpose, these are the supporting needs. Capacity and transportation demand, I think, is, is probably the top need. You know, so the project is intended to increase operational capacity to meet the future travel demand. System linkage, improve north-south access. This is mainly, if 41 was elevated, I think it would improve north-south access between the three adjoining counties. And then if Benita Beach is elevated, or even if 41 is elevated, it'll help relieve the congestion and improve direct access to beaches and tourist destinations.
So Councilman Simmons, so there's some important information in that, in that clip. The first thing is that she was there to ask for input and gather, and gather public comment on that presentation. And second is that she clearly states the purpose of the ETDM study, and, and their data collection at that point, that discussion, was to facilitate traffic, that was the goal, to facilitate traffic, and look at what was needed and necessary to improve commerce and, and some of those other issues, some of the other things concerned, she identified multimodal transit, the oper, you know, the operational movement of that intersection.
But I'm, I guess, I mean, I appreciate that, but I guess I'm a little confused. I mean, she's just throwing, you know, whether it's north-south or east-west, I mean, just kind of using it like it almost doesn't matter.
Absolutely. And this is an important part of the process. There has to be a very clear discussion of all of the alternatives, and what would be those, the impact of those things. And that's why these things are publicly vetted, they're held at meetings that are publicly advertised, and we ask for input from citizens, from the technical committees, and we do that through the Lee MPO process that is very public and very transparent.
Okay. Just have a little bit more here, not very much, actually. I mean, I'm, you know, aware that in addition to a flyover, Section 1502, I believe it is, of the federal law, also requires FDOT to not dismiss other alternatives at this intersection?
That's correct.
My view's pretty straightforward. The view's been pretty straightforward here from the board. We need to stop this potential of a flyover at the location, so we need to stop this PDNE study. Please honor our view. You've heard the input here tonight. Benita Springs is the city with small-town charm. I have a lot of friends on the east coast of Florida, a lot of friends, okay? That is not my vision of Benita Springs, and I don't believe it's a lot of the, the majority of the view in this room and in this city. We don't want to continue a process that has the potential to destroy this small-town charm. I propose a resolution, and I'd like to obviously have more, much more information exchanged here, but I will be making a motion this evening to vote on this issue once again. And to cancel, I want to make it very clear, cancel this study at the intersection of US-41 and Benita Beach Road, and I really thank all of you for being here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel, anyone else have anything to offer? Yes, Stephen.
Commissioner, thank you and everybody else for being here tonight. I just want to make sure that we're clear on one thing. There has never been a PDNE study with, without a flyover as an option. Is that correct?
That, that is not correct, actually. There, none of the alternatives that we will be studying have been determined yet, and that's our difficulty in canceling a study or honoring the request that the City Council put forward first, that said, if you have to study a flyover, remove it. At this point, there is nothing to remove. The study goes in with a blank slate, completely clear of options. They look at the data, they look at the need, the traffic flow, they look at the roadway regionally as part of our transportation infrastructure, and they make recommendations based on the projected growth in 20 years of what the need will be at that intersection. They look at hurricane evacuation routes and its effect on moving people efficiently and quickly out of the area. It looks at multimodal transportation. Our district secretary is committed to bicycle and pedestrian and transit inclusion in all of our projects. So it looks holistically at that intersection and develops options, and then each of those options is looked at for viability. There's a couple of them selected to move forward, and then each of those is analyzed against themselves. Throughout the process, there are opportunities for public comment, and at critical decision points, there are public hearings that put on the record any comments in favor or that question any of the information. All of that goes formally into the record and is part of that evaluation criteria that helps in the selection process.
Second question, traditionally, when you've done the other studies, how many options were you given to the community?
Typically, there are four options that are developed, and they can include roundabouts, they can include flyovers, they can include upgrade improvements. It all depends on what the data says the need is at that intersection, taking into account all of the requirements that we need that intersection to function at.
Okay. Now, in terms of us as a council or a city, if the, the study goes through and the recommendation is a flyover, do we have the option of saying, well, we don't want, we definitely, there's seven of us here, we, none of us want the flyover? Okay? So do we have an option to choose number two or number three on that option list?
Yes, there is an opportunity to provide significant comment throughout the process, but more importantly, the phases that followed that PDNE study and the final recommendation of that study, the right-of-way acquisition, the engineering and the, the planning process, all of that, and the final budgeting of that construction, all of those are decision points that would have to move forward in order for an alternative to be built, any alternative.
Okay. So some of the concerns that the constituents in this room had was that, once you've identified a flyover as the option, that that's it, and there's nothing that we can do about it. Is there any truth to that?
Again, that has to be weighed. That's part of the, that is why the state is, participates in the Metropolitan Planning Organization and uses that as a decision-making tool. You would have to program all of those subsequent phases, and I, and I apologize to Councilman Simmons, that's why I got the phasing confused when, when you asked that question. There are all those other components of that project that would have to be financed, they would have to be programmed, they'd have to be identified as a priority, the Lee MPO would have to put those in our budget, and we would have to adopt them.
Thank you. No further questions.
Okay, and just to follow up on, help Councilman out with some of those questions. So far as the PDNE process goes, I mean, it's been said that the PDNE process, it's because the federal funding that you can't preclude things, but that... because the federal funding that you can't preclude things, but that is the nature of the PDNE process, not the nature of federal funding, is that true?
Well, allow me to clarify just a bit, regardless of whether the study is federal or state-funded, we would still go through a PDNE process, because it allows us to program and to study through a very organized manner what the improvement is needed. The PDNE process itself, and a condition of federal approval of the PDNE process, is that there is no predisposition going into the study, that we do not prejudice the outcome by making determinations going into the study about what we think should be the solution.
And it's been suggested that there may be another mechanism, other than the PDNE process, when it comes to doing improvements to that intersection, that the city could do their own study, we'll just say for the sake of more argument, I was gonna say argument, but of more argument, that the city could do a study, and somehow that would be useful for the state. Is there another process besides that, that could ultimately result in some type of improvement?
Well, the city could certainly take on any initiative that it would like, we would use the PDNE process, because it ensures that, again, the process has met several federal requirements, including the National Environmental Policy Act, the NEPA, which guarantees that we, that requires us to look at all of these elements as part of our programming of federal money.
So, regardless of an initiative that the city put on, that would just be, we could do that parallel to whatever, but if the state was going to do something, they're gonna have to go through their process?
We will follow the PDNE process.
The PDNE process.
Right.
Okay, now, and just a couple more questions, unless somebody's on fire here and needs to do this. I wanted to talk a little bit more about, so far as the MPO's involvement in this, and there's a lot of concern so far as who can stop this, when we can stop this, that type of thing. I think that that's kind of to the point of the matter there, is that if we get information that we don't like, we don't have something we don't like, it's actually the MPO's decision. Is that true? You're not gonna do that, if the MPO says, "We don't want you to do this," you're not gonna do it.
We program the study at the request of the MPO, and the MPO would have to take action to make a decision otherwise. We've gone to the MPO and have not received any further, any other direction.
Right, and in the future, as this comes back to the MPO, and you present, we go through these presentations with the MPO all the time, here's the study we're doing, what do you guys think, do you want to continue? And, you know, that happens continually, every MPO meeting, that's what we do on all these other projects. This project would be the same, if it goes along, this project would be the same, as you get to these other areas, like you said, after data, you bring your data in, you say, "Okay, this is what we figured out, do you want to continue?" There's a go, no-go at various places?
Well, there are decision points, and Secretary Haddaway has offered to bring all of that information to the city council first, and then to the LEMPO, so that there is a discussion at all of those points. Most importantly, is that next phase, this data collection phase, when we have some information, additional information about what's going on at that intersection, and future predictions, we're able to validate some of the information we've collected. That will come back to the city council and the LEMPO for further discussion.
But, just to clarify for everybody, it's still the MPO's decision, I mean, I don't want anybody to walk away from here thinking that, that there's some way that that can be delegated, it's the MPO's decision, is it not?
It's the LEMPO's decision, yes.
Okay, all right. Before I go to you, Pete, let me see if there's somebody else who wants to chime in before Pete has something to say, you guys? Okay, go ahead, Pete.
I just had, I guess maybe a quick question, maybe it's not a quick answer. Not trying to be funny here, but you were here in January.
Yes.
And I remember that, and we did vote five to two. Why did this study move forward in March, knowing that it was a five-to-two supermajority against moving forward with the study?
The city council asked us to end the study if we had, if we removed one alternative. We cannot remove any alternative from consideration, and the LEMPO did not give any further direction for us to stop the study.
So, was it that our motion was not worded correctly?
No, it's that the study was initiated, programmed in advance by the LEMPO through that public process, and that would be the appropriate place for that discussion to happen, at the LEMPO.
Was the LEMPO aware of the five-to-two vote? When they proceeded with the study in March?
I won't, I'll...
Yes, and the LEMPO, actually, the board talked about it at April meeting, based on discussions that came up at that time, and it wasn't a formal vote, but it was pretty much keep going. And it also came up in May, because Billy wasn't at the, Billy Haddaway wasn't at the April meeting, he brought it up specifically, he took that direction and went forward to say, "Okay, the discussion was to keep moving at that point." Now, it wasn't a formal vote.
All due respect, and believe me, from the bottom of my soul, I mean that, sir, something that's this big of an issue to this community, there was not a formal vote, and it was just a loose discussion?
It was a discussion.
To move forward?
Well, I mean, it was more to get input into the process.
Well, wait a minute, I don't want you blaming this gentleman right here.
No, I'm just trying to find out what happened.
It's not his job to do that, it's the MPO's job to go ahead, and it's not uncommon before, just like counsel, before we take, before we bring something up as an action item, they'll check up, staff will go like, "Look, this is an issue that came up, MPO, do you want to put this on an agenda?" We don't just bring, it just doesn't pop onto there. They get a letter, they get letters all the time. So, what had happened was, is that the letter came by, it says, "We don't want this," the MPO took a look at it, believe me, all the MPO members got it, all the MPO members had an opportunity to do something about it, but it just, it just didn't come to the point, it came to a discussion, and they said, "Well, you know what?" And we had a conversation with Carmen, and Carmen said, "You know what? This wasn't, it didn't appear at that time." And I have to tell you, I don't know if the people were there, it didn't appear like something that was going to explode, or overrun, or that the, that there was a danger of an overpass appearing overnight, or something. It seemed like, we asked Carmen, "Is there just data collection in this first part?" "Yes." "Is this something that can be, if we get the data back, is this something that stopped then?" "Yes." And then we, everybody was okay. And I think that, I think that...
I can understand that, however, we sent a clear direction to stop the study.
But, the city of Benita Springs isn't king of the universe, I'm sorry, we're not.
Ben, may I say something, please?
Please.
I appreciate you coming. I have the minutes of all the MPO meetings, we had representation there, what did they say?
Bill, you know, you know what we said, "Don't put these people on the spot."
But, Ben, hold it, you gave me the floor, and let me continue. And I know this is a very difficult thing for everybody in the room, but I do know a couple things, and I did a lot of investigation myself after the fact, because on January 15th, we voted five to two to do this. Now, the two representatives who were serving for us, is obviously Steve McIntosh, and then the mayor, Ben Nelson, did they have anything, or is there any comments from him, from us, explaining why we voted the way we did? And I don't know if you were there or not, I'm just asking.
Yes, and it was discussions about the vote, it was also, there was a letter written that was read into the record at one of the meetings. So, it was clear from that side, but the MPO board had the discussion, and essentially the group, let's just say the overall group discussion was, "We want to get the data, why would you stop it before you have the data to make that decision?"
Even though we had two people representing us at the meeting, from the city council, they didn't speak to how we voted and the representation. I have certain things here, but I don't have everything, but I'm trying to be reasonable about this, and I guess sometimes it's hard to do that, when we see circumstances come about, because I was on the affirmative side about the flyover. So, I question if in fact, we, our people said something, okay? We know what they said, because, but there's nothing in the minutes, literally nothing, other than the May 16th meeting.
Usually, they're, what do you call them, summary minutes.
Yeah, I understand that, I understand, but there's not even a word about the city council in Benita Springs does not support this, and...
Do you trust me?
There was comments, obviously, from the mayor and Mr. McIntosh, in reference to it, in a way that was not the way the rest of the council voted. And that's a fact, they're facts. So, I just, it's just uncomfortable to have to do these things, and it's, and even when listening to that tape, the URS, she talked about an interchange, that's like on a turnpike.
Is it, oh...
I mean, well, she used the word, she used the word.
Yeah, but it's usually, it's used in overpasses.
It sounded like that it was a foregoing conclusion, that the overpass is gonna happen one way or the other, from that, from her comments. Peter, you want to, I'm done.
Anything else? Yep, anyone else? Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna jump in now. I've said from the very beginning that I want the information, I want to see what we can do for especially the pedestrian and bicycle safety, and how else we can handle it, but I'm only interested in ad-grade improvements, and I just can't wrap my brain around why we gave that direction, to say that that's what we could all agree on, that we would welcome that, but not having the ability to even have the pull of the MPO suggest to the state that a one size doesn't fit all in every circumstance. And here, we're saying, "We're open to the study, but we're not interested in the flyover." And, you know, ultimately, we're charged with being fiscally responsible with our budgets, and I just see it that you're spending a lot of money on an option, and a lot of time on an option, that we're not interested in carrying through with. And I'm not, believe me, I'm trying not to be upset, but I also know that traffic studies, you're charged with maintaining and creating efficient roadways, and safe roadways, and moving people, but the studies don't take into effect the social and economic impact. You don't really get that as to what it's gonna do to our intersection, and our center of our community. And that's, you know, where you just get hung up on this, and it just feels like it is a train that's barreling down the track, and my fear is confound and real, and I'm afraid to say, "Yeah, okay, I'll bend a little and give a little," and say, "Go ahead with the study," because I am just terrified that that opens the door wide open, that this is just gonna go, that... I appreciate, I am elected servant, I give everything to what I do, and I try to always, in every decision, walk a mile in someone else's shoes, and I'm walking a mile in our MPO members' shoes, and how do you figure this? Because I could never, in my own mind, be able to step up to an MPO meeting and tell the people that live in Cape Coral that this is what's good for your community, because they don't have a pulse, and they don't know exactly, I mean, I wouldn't have the pulse and know exactly what's going on in that community. So, it's such a struggle, and it's so hard to say, "This is the way to go," and I have to take a deep breath and step back, and for me, say, "I'm just too afraid to go forward with it."
So, I have to correct you, you said that the study does not take into account socioeconomic, it specifically is required to take that into account. And that includes the economic impact to that area, specifically the commercial and other things that are contextual to your intersection. And we certainly understand the discussion that has to take place. You said at the beginning that you wanted the data collection, you wanted to understand better what's happening. We cannot do that without conducting this part of the study, and going through and doing that hard analysis. This is a very complex project. Although it is located, you know, strategically, right in the middle of your city, it's also part of a very important regional network, and it belongs to the state of Florida, it belongs to the residents and the visitors here, it's part of our infrastructure network, and so it would be very difficult to propose a solution to traffic impacts that are coming 20 years down the road, without doing a very structured study that helps us to understand that. The study is designed to take all those factors in very carefully, and to allow the stakeholders, the city, the business community, the chambers of commerce, your tourism, all of your stakeholders that have a stake in the success of our transportation network, to weigh in on that process, and to collectively make the best decisions for our infrastructure. And I certainly understand the fiscal responsibility. Every day, we're challenged with making very difficult decisions about how we spend money, and there is no shortage of needs in the district, we certainly understand that. But, the study provides information, and I think you can't make, the LEMPO, the planners, the engineers, the county can't make critical decisions without having that data in hand. Now, saying that, we've already completed the data collection, we are going through validation and analysis at this point. When that information is ready, we are committed to bringing it to the city first for further discussion, and then to the LEMPO. Those are opportunities for additional public comment, and to weigh in, and to say, "Did you consider these particular aspects, how did you address them in the study?" And that's how you hold the state and the LEMPO accountable for being, for conducting that study in a proper manner.
Okay, I want to take just a little bit of a break here, and just tell a little bit of a story here, being the old person on this, been here for a while. I don't want anybody here to think that what you're going through here is unusual, it feels weird, doesn't it? I mean, and it feels awful, right? And like, "Oh, my gosh, we can't agree, we're having an argument over transportation issues." Well, guess what? That's been our history, that's, you know what that's called? Benita Springs. I mean, that's who we are, that's the difficult decisions we've had to make, and I just, I jotted these down, this is from memory, by the way, so don't hold me to this, but listen, it started way back when, back in 1965, when they built the causeway. There weren't many of us around to talk about it, then about 3,000 people to have the discussion, but there was a lot of discussion, there was a lot of, "Why are we inviting Fort Myers Beach to Benita Beach? Why are we doing that? Why is there connectivity?" I mean, there were all kinds of discussions up to then. I recall, that's how old I am, I recall when we got our first stoplight, our first traffic light in Benita Springs, we didn't have a single traffic light. Our most important intersection was Benita Beach Road and Old 41, right? And there was a, it was a two-way stop, you bolt through coming on 41, but when the dog track opened up, and then that, and that's the same argument, the only time there was a lot of traffic, you could slay out in the middle of the road in July, but when the dog trap opened up, you couldn't get out anywhere. When they put that, I recall, I recall, it was yesterday, when they put that traffic light up, and nobody asked us permission, they just put it up, everybody thought, "Well, that's it." And I'm not, I'm not being facetious, there goes our small-town charm, we got a stoplight. Stoplight, that's it, that's the beginning of the end, it's the end of the world as we know it, and they were right! They were right, it was the end of the world as we know it, but they put that stoplight there, and it was a good thing, and it wasn't the end of it. Then, on the heels of that, building New US-41, this very intersection that we're having an argument about here, it didn't exist, New 41 wasn't there, it was Old 41, and the community ripped itself to pieces over whether, "Do we four-lane Old 41?" Sorry about that, I was glad that was in your head. I'm like, "That felt weird." You have a hard head. Sorry, but it was like...
I've been told that.
Do we four-lane Old 41 through Benita Springs, right, through Benita Springs, and do we ruin our small-town character? Or do we take 41 and build it out here, and ruin our small-town character by taking all the business out of there? That argument went along for a long time, you had bumper stickers, t-shirts, even back then, four-lane 41 now, and the decision, you can see what decision was made, and you know what? They were right about it siphoning the businesses away from there. We struggled, we're still struggling from that decision in downtown Benita, but was it better than having the four-lane 41 go through downtown Benita? Probably was. Well, then we go, and this is, I'll just take a little bit longer on this, because it's important, I think, to talk about who we are, and the decisions we've had to make. The creation of the water system, you think that went smoothly, when we decided we want city water? Prior to the city water system being created, 1970, we got, you got your well water, probably 20 feet from the place where you dumped your sewage at. That was considered okay, that was, that's the way everybody did it, you had your septic tank and your well in the same place. A group of people from the Benita Springs Board of Realtors decided, "You know what? Maybe we should have city municipal water." Well, I remember my dad sitting on that board, and I remember a guy coming up, George Crichton, if anybody, all Benita people out there, came up to the microphone and called my dad a rumhead, which was ridiculous, because he drank gin, okay? Everyone knows that, anyway, or he did, drank gin. But, they didn't like it, they didn't like it. You know what you're gonna do? You're gonna ruin our small town, you're gonna bring lots of people here that we don't want to see here, and they were like 4,000 people at the time. But they went ahead, and they made the tough decision, and they did that. And right along then, the alignment of I-75, the creation of the sewer system, people hated that idea. Big government, government's gonna tell us what to do, you're gonna require us to hook up to a sewer system? My sewer, my septic tanks works great at low tide, I don't need you butting into this. That was actual some of the comments that were made, but guess what BSU did? They went ahead, and they bit the bullet, and they did it, and they've been getting the hell beat out of them ever since. Okay, they have, you know they have, but they made a courageous decision. And then the four-laning of Benita Beach Road, that became a thing. Our CR- Our CRA people, when we formed a CRA, we wanted to rescue Benita and it started out with grandiose ideas. It was a wonderful thing. We're gonna have museums. We're gonna have railroad tracks and railroad stations. And then everybody came in there and took a little bit out of it, what they didn't want, what they didn't like. And guess what we ended up with? Brick sidewalks and streetlights. That's what we ended up with. But that's it. And then, when we became a city, right? I went through my emails of 2001. You should look at them sometime if you want to be horrified. You think that I'm getting the hell beat out of me now. You should look at, when that council, at that time, was left by the county, sorry, Dave. The county left us. They said, "You want to be a city? Here. Make this decision about the alignment of Imperial, right? It's all yours. You decide." The decision we had to make is, you either let Imperial Livingston stop at Benita Beach Road and then start back up again over there. That's what people want, some people said. "You're gonna ruin our neighborhoods. You're gonna ruin our small-town way of life. You're gonna create a speedway. You're gonna do all these things, right?" We went on and on. Council tore at each other. It was ugly. It was really ugly. I got accused of more things than I can even write down on this piece of paper. But guess what that council did? They made a decision. Go find somebody who doesn't like Imperial Livingston now. Go find somebody. Somebody who lives on the road is probably not real happy about it. But you know what? It worked out all right. It worked out okay. Was it the end of the world as we know it? Yeah. Yeah, it was. But it's okay, to quote a song. So, yeah, we had to make tough decisions. And the six-laning of New 41, there was still controversy with that. Six-laning of I-75, not much controversy with that, but we had to fight to get the money. We had to fight the whole thing. Four-laning of Terry Street, realignment of Pennsylvania-Ragsdale intersection, four-laning of North 41, six-laning of Benita Beach Roads Phase 1 and 2, the Sandy Road Lane Alignment, we tied a vote at the city council four times on the Sandy Lane Alignment. Most of you are like, "Sandy Lane? Where's that?" We decided not to do that one, but we knew that choosing an alignment, that someday, someday, Old 41 would need to be connected to Sandy Lane going to Coconut Point, someday. And so we knew, it's important for us to make this decision so people at least know, "Don't build your house right there because there will be a road someday, someday." But the council had the courage to make that decision. And that's all I'm gonna go through. There's more of that, from interchange improvements to Hickory Boulevard shoulder widening. We argued about that. We argued about whether or not we should put bike lanes on Hickory Boulevard. That was a big deal, too. So don't think that this is the end of the world, either way that you do this. If you decide, if this council decides, "Hey, look, you know what? We don't want to do this study." Well, I would ask then, "Then what's your plan? Then what's your plan for that intersection?" And if your plan is, "We're okay with traffic," that ain't true. Because I know better. I got the emails to prove it. The people in Benita Springs, the people in Florida, they hate traffic. They hate it and they hate waiting for it. And Bill, I've got four or five emails from your wife to prove so, that when the traffic builds up there at that interchange, that flyover out by Worthington, she doesn't like it and she shouldn't like it. So there you have it. I mean, my only point is, I'm not trying to promote anything other than to let you know this isn't unusual. Okay? Bill, go ahead.
Excuse me, you mentioned my wife. My wife doesn't know how to write. No, that's not true.
Oh, I'm like, "Easy." I almost jumped in there and interrupted you because I didn't want you to get beat up.
She's much more skilled than I ever will be.
She's very adept.
That's right. But she doesn't write email. We can't communicate from households where we're council people. We're not allowed to do that, even if it came from...
Well, your wife is.
Well, I, you know, by the way, you were supposed to...
Boy, that's a segue. We were talking about something completely different.
You were supposed to supply me with those emails from a couple meetings ago. I still didn't get them.
The emails from your wife?
No, from you. You said you were gonna give me those emails or something that you had. I think we're off the topic, aren't we?
Yeah, a bit. Okay, go ahead.
Well, not, go ahead, Peter.
No, and I appreciate that, Ben. You've been here, not your entire life, but probably, you know, 90% of your life. And, I mean, there's no situation that's exactly the same, but the best way I can relate, you know, I'm a small-town kid from New Hampshire. You know, if you go back to the late 50s, everybody's heard of Route 95, or I think most of you have, it split up my grandfather's farm. They took it by eminent domain, okay, to make the land, to make it go through. If you move forward, kind of fast-forward, you know, and for the longest time, Benita's been, what? That town between two towns. I grew up in one of those towns, between two towns. But you know what? People took pride in that. They didn't want the big city that was, you know, next door. They wanted what we had. So when you say, you know, "We don't need to go back to the cavemen and walk through every single thing that has happened," but our city, it's a town, believe me, it's not a city. Excuse me. When I grew up, it was about 1,700 people. It swelled, if you can use that term, to 4,000 people. And then the citizens took action. They said, "You know what? We don't want a lot of houses here. We don't want an exit off of Route 95 allowing direct access into this town." And they fought that exit off of Route 95 and they finally kept it away. It went away after probably 20 years and there still is no exit off of 95 to this day. And people are very proud of that fact. People are also proud of the fact that, once we swelled to 4,000 people, well, let's see, what if we do zoning and make two-and-a-half acre zoning for you to build a new house? So guess what? They did that. That limited the number of houses coming in, okay? This is not a perfect analogy. However, we're at the point here, do we want to preserve what we have? A small town with a big, bright future, or is it time to bring in the bulldozers and just drop the plans and make it a mega-highway? That's, you know, that's where we are, folks. Whether you agree with that or disagree with that, that is analogous to where we are at the moment. In this town, we don't need a superhighway here. I don't want a superhighway here. The citizens don't want a superhighway here. Is this dramatic? Is this maybe? But, look, that's where we are.
Councilman Simmons, what you described with the I-95 in your town is exactly why this policy and these procedures exist. Because this provides a mechanism for taking into account all of those considerations when making a decision. This is not a unilateral decision in that it's done in an absence of information. It is done collectively. It's done with data. And we know that when we get this level of discussion, when we get public input, we know we're doing our job because we're bringing this information forward and we're gathering public input.
No, that's great, but I mean, it's just, what do we want as a council here? What do we see? Do we want this town just to explode with people? And, you know, do we want busier roads? Do we want easier access? Do we want more people?
Unfortunately, traffic doesn't end at political boundaries. And so there's a lot of what's happening along US 41 and those corridors that's of regional perspective. And then, and that traffic will come regardless.
No, understood. But, you know, we are the city council. Here we are. And we have taken a vote and we will take another one this evening. In fact, I'd probably like to call the vote at this point unless there's some other...
Whoa, there's not a motion yet, but anyway, I don't think there is.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Okay, go ahead, Steve. Steve, go ahead.
You know one of the things I was most proud of about this council a year ago, my first term, was we had disagreements. We got them out. And typically, we voted unanimously to move ahead. So somehow, that's been lost. I know this is a very delicate issue. It's, I think Councilwoman Martin probably summed it up the best for the people in the audience. She's scared to death of a flyover. Yeah, well, I've been on public record, I don't want a flyover either. But I would like to know what the options are. If you look at, just tonight, we had three people come to the podium with suggestions on options, including Councilwoman Simons, who came with an option on that intersection. If we don't do the study, we don't have an idea what we can do. It's not, honestly, it's not in the hands of the city council. It's in the hands of the MPO. The Director of the FDOT for the state has forwarded that back to the MPO. It's gonna go through the TAC, the Technical Advisory Committee, the Citizens Advisory Committee. It's going to be vetted. There's gonna be discussions. There's gonna be votes. And whether it's brought to the MPO to drop or to continue comes through that process. Now, it's easier for me, when this vote comes tonight, to say, "I support dropping this immediately." I'll stop getting disparaging comments made about me. I'll stop getting the emails that say, "I don't know what I'm doing. I'm a fool." That's okay. I can live with those sorts of things because I know we need to understand how this city's gonna survive. And if you're gonna say, "We're not gonna have growth," it's ludicrous. There's going to be growth. Even if you stopped growth in the city of Benita Springs, you've got communities surrounding us that are gonna be using that intersection and that roadway. I've been, it's been implied that I haven't done my job, that I haven't lived up the sworn duties of an obligation to this charter. That's not true. I look at the mayor every morning and wonder if I've done the right things for this city 20, 25, 40 years from now. And that's a decision that's being made tonight. I don't think it's about a flyover. That's an easy, that's an easy target. You call it a flyover, people get scared. Yeah, absolutely. It's not a flyover study. It's an intersection study, trying to understand how we can make this better in the future. The, I guess the thing that I come down to is, I'd like to make it a unanimous vote, but frankly, it's not unanimous in the citizenry. I've gotten emails, there's been letters in the editor saying, "Now, let's do this study. Let's make sure we know what we're doing, rather than do nothing and stick our heads in the sand." So when the vote comes tonight, I'll continue to get the emails. I'll continue to be disparaged along with other people in this council who vote to continue the study. But it's the right thing to do to understand how this city could grow, and it will grow. So make the motion, whatever you want to do, and let's get on.
Okay. Before we do that, okay, Mike, I'm gonna ask one question. Can I ask you a question of, I got Dave here, Dave Loveland. He's for the county. He's got money. I want to talk to him for a minute. Hey, Dave, come here. He knew this was coming up. Oh, moneybags. What's going on? So, I was just gonna ask you a question about Benita Beach Road. It's a connected subject. I'm sorry to make light of this, but that's just me. You know that. Dave, hi.
Hi.
So, how's the, I'm gonna freak everybody out, the six-laning of Benita Beach Road from 41 to 41? How's that coming along?
That project has gone through the design phase and we are awaiting available funding to move forward with the right-of-way acquisition phase and the construction phase for that project, which would be jointly funded based on an interlocal agreement between the city and the county from 2008, where we agreed to share the funding.
Right. Now, so far as the effect, this six-laning, do you remember from the drawing? And I know this is more complicated than that. Does it, six-laning go all the way to this intersection? Or does it stop short of that? Do you remember from the drawing?
No, I don't. I believe it goes all the way to the intersection.
It goes all the way to the intersection. So, maybe, unless the city council votes not to fund, of course, the city council votes not to vote on the six-laning or of that process, that won't happen, right? But if it does happen, it'll be six-laned all the way from there, all the way to Old 41. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And the interlocal agreement contemplates six-laning continuing on the other side of 41 over to Vanderbilt Beach Road.
Now, and I'm gonna pick your memory here. I just want to let everybody know that this conversation about what might happen, Dave and I and Gary before Carl, because I was deeply involved in the MPO and at one time, I was the only MPO member until I managed to convince the MPO, that we should get another MPO member, which was a good trick. You're welcome. Anyway, so, but up at that time, we'd had conversations about, you know, okay, you know what? I mean, is the intersection a problem or what do you do? I mean, if you don't do something with the intersection, and we had a conversation, you and I did, a couple of times, about, "All right, the intersection is the way it is. What else can we do? What other kind of tricks can we do?" And you said that, I think, I'll paraphrase, "That's all you get right there unless you do something outside of the confines of the right-of-way areas right there." I mean, is that pretty much correct?
Well, I think, based on the projections and the long-range plans going back to 2000, with the 2020 plan and then a 2030 plan and 2035 plan, we're showing a demand that is gonna exceed what you can probably deal with, with at-grade improvements. There are limits to what you can do at grade when an intersection becomes saturated. There's only so much green time you can allocate to each movement from four directions to try to clear that. So...
Right.
There may be additional options that we haven't really considered. That's what a PDNE study would look at, is what kind of alternatives are out there that we might not have thought of.
Okay, and one more thing before I go back to Mike over here, is that, I'm reading from here, it says by 2035, and I believe this comes from the FDOT, it says, "By the year 2035, traffic volumes are expected to increase between 44.7% and 64.9% on Benita Beach Road." The increase, these increased volumes will deteriorate traffic conditions at the intersection. Without the proposed intersection, the improvement, the volume-to-capacity ratio will range between 1.25 and 2.0. Is that bad?
That is bad. Anything over 1 is bad.
Okay, and that's in 2035. And again, for the record, anything that this study generates, and I was looking at Bill, and thank you for getting it, but Bill asked for some of the documents that comes with what the criteria is for being studied, and their study projects what they build in like 2040? Is that correct? So, don't get...
20 years.
20 years. So, again, don't get too freaked out, because, let me see. Well, anyway, we'll do the addition. It's a little mean. But it's not like this is gonna pop out. It's not a five-year thing. It's not a 10-year thing. It's not a 15-year thing. It's 20 years. And with that, Mike, go ahead. Thank you, Dave.
Well, then, my understanding is, there is gonna be an interchange upgrade with the six-laning then. The interchange has to change a little bit. There's extra lanes going through. So there will be some improvement at the intersection already. Correct?
Well, I don't know. Let's find out.
With six-lanings from that one side...
Well, you said it was gonna go to the other side, all the way to Vanderbilt.
Well, eventually. That would be a separate phase, separate project. So as the one piece is done, you'll have the issue of the through lanes and not having through lanes on the other side. There may have to be some transition area either before 41 or after 41 as you cross over to narrow that back down to four for some period of time until additional six-laning is done. Then you have the issue with turn lanes, that you have to fit in there, right turn lanes, left turn lanes.
And that would all get figured in with doing the six-laning?
Right, but that only addresses one direction of the intersection.
The other question would be, if we do get rid of the study and deem it to be a constrained intersection, I was told that means nothing can ever be done there. But Sarasota deemed theirs to be constrained and yet they're putting in roundabouts. I would never, you know, advocate for roundabouts, but they're still doing work on their road even though it's constrained. How are they doing that?
Well, I don't really know. I don't know who is designating it constrained and who's doing the improvements. I don't know the details of that. My understanding of constrained is based on what Lee County does in our comprehensive plan. We have certain roadway segments that are designated constrained, which the board has said, as a matter of policy, we don't intend to widen those roads by adding more lanes. It does still allow operational improvements to try to address the congestion that's expected because the constrained roads designation in part went with the whole issue of roadway concurrency and whether you can continue to allow development on an already congested roadway. And by designating certain roadways constrained and saying, "We're not going to widen them," the board did allow a higher level of congestion on those roadways. So development approvals could still happen. You could still do operational improvements. So that means turn lanes and signalization. The Hickory Boulevard is an example of a county road that's designated as constrained. The county said, "We're not adding more lanes." But adding bike lanes on the side were considered the type of operational improvement. It would accommodate an alternative mode of transportation to help take some of that traffic pressure potentially off of the road.
So it's not the end of the world if we deem it constrained?
Well, that's what the county's process is. The county's process doesn't necessarily prohibit the state DOT from doing something with a state roadway. Again, that direction...
It'd be the state FDOT that would be deeming it constrained if we say we don't want a flyover. Correct? I think that's what the Secretary... I think that's what Secretary Hathaway said.
Well, we wouldn't make that determination without data. We would need more information. And we would not prejudice our study by making any, you know, assumptions at this point.
A DOT has a particular criteria, why you can consider things constrained, socio-economic, I mean, all kinds of...
Yes, we recognize certain roadways are constrained, and it can be geographic and in nature where there you cannot expand some...
Well, to keep our small-town charm, I don't believe we'd want to go past six lanes on 41, because if we go eight, it's just going to, to look at I-4, you keep going wider, you just get more traffic. So, I mean, to me, I think it sounds like a good thing to have a constrained roadway.
Well, I'm glad you brought up the small-town charm thing again. That's part of the argument. There were several arguments made here, and you know what? This is a conversation we're having, okay? So I'm going to have a conversation with you guys, everyone. Some of the arguments made about this, I didn't quite understand, so far as people who didn't want to have the study or whatever. And a couple of them were, were kind of highlighted in almost every email. It says, "A flyover, if built, would destroy our small-town charm." Now, I think about that intersection, and I look at that intersection, and I drive through that intersection as many times, if not more than most people do. That's, that intersection doesn't say anything about small-town charm to me. Does it, does it really, do you really feel, and you don't need to all go like this or like that, I'm just saying, just kind of help, ask yourself, does a six-lane highway, and I have to tell you, when you look at how many lanes come together there, there's 22 lanes. There are 22 lanes, counting turn lanes, that come in, not go out, that come into that intersection. There are 22 lanes of traffic that come into that intersection. Is that, is that small-town charm? Have you tried to ride a bicycle across there? Have you tried to walk across 41? Is that really small? Are we really losing small-town charm? So that's just a question I ask myself. So, I really don't, I mean, you still not like a flyover for various reasons, but eh. Now, if you're building on Old 41, right over the top of Mike's bait tackle shop, yeah, I think that's a big problem. I mean, I don't think that would be a good idea. That's ruining small-town charm. And then the other one is, it, of course, it ruined businesses within a quarter mile of the flyover. I don't know. I would like to see really good data on that. I would like to know that. I would hate for that to happen. But I would like to see it in the context of, what are the economic effects for the entire rest of the roadway? For the, all the businesses that go down Bonita Beach Road? Does, what is the effect on that to not have that traffic go down there? When you compare the two? And so, that's a question for me. And then the other one is that it will visually divide our city with a flyover. I don't understand, I don't get that argument either, because I look out east of town, and there's I-75 and a flyover, and a lot of people are here from East Bonita, you're not divided from this community whatsoever. You're unabashedly part of this community, and you've made yourselves very clear that you are. And it's divided not only by one, one flyover by two, one at Terry Street and one at I-75. You're part of this community. It didn't divide you. I-75 didn't divide you. Bonita Beach Road didn't divide anybody. It's four lanes, got to be six lanes. And New 41 is six lanes. It didn't, didn't just all of a sudden build a wall up, and okay, Bonita Bay's no longer part of Bonita Springs. So I don't get that rationale either. And those are the, some of the powerful emotional, and I understand that, it's really visceral, it's very emotional. But that's why I agree with Dr. McIntosh, and it's probably the only argument I'm going to make against tonight, is that all I wanted to do is see the data. I'm not afraid of it. I'm not afraid of, I know enough about the MPO and about the way it works, that, you know, when it really comes down to it, they're going to make good decisions, whether it's, hey, we don't want to do this, I've seen them do that, I've seen, I've seen things that the city of Bonita Springs wanted, like Coconut Point Interchange. I didn't have anybody coming here to city council complaining about that unless you were from Astero, and then that got shot down. And talk about a reliever from Bonita Beach Road, that would have done a lot, but they didn't like it, so it got shot down. It did. It did. And so, I know it can happen. So with that, you want to make a motion? Anybody want to make a motion? Or you want further discussion? Or are we done?
Any other comments? I'd like to make a motion, like I did in January, to stop this PDNE study immediately or at the next MPO meeting. I'd like to, I guess I probably can't make sure that there's a formal vote, but I would like to make sure that it's more of a formal process. Okay? Thank you very much.
And please, and please be specific in your, and I'm going to help you out here, in your motion. And let's just not write a letter of objection, let's not express an opinion. Make it, make your motion to where that you request that the chairman of the MPO place, in your motion, place this on the agenda, I think it's going to be on there anyway, for a formal up or down vote.
No, absolutely. I'd like to make a motion to stop the PDNE study immediately and place it on the agenda for a formal vote at the next MPO meeting.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second to that. Any other discussion?
Just make sure I understand the motion.
Okay.
This is a motion for the MPO to go through the process, TAC, CAC, taking their findings to the MPO.
Sorry. I want to understand the motion. This is the motion that will go through the process, the CAC, the TAC will go through their due diligence, they'll make a decision, they'll make a recommendation to the MPO at that time, whether their recommendation is, yes, we should continue the study, or no, we should not continue the study. You want the motion from the chairman? Is that what you said?
No, the motion is to stop the study.
But after it goes through the process?
No.
Well, how, can you stop?
The process has started when it shouldn't have started to begin with.
No, Dave, Dave, can you explain what's happening right now already?
Well, I'd like Don to talk about the MPO process.
Right, that's what he's going to tell us.
Okay, what was the question? I'm sorry.
Okay. Right now, the Secretary Hathaway has made a request that the MPO reconsider this, and then because of that, it's going to, was going to go to the, it's going to go to the CAC. That's the proper part of the process.
Do we go to the committees first? CAC? They'll make a recommendation to the MPO board.
Discussion and recommendation. And your TAC representatives, because of your motion, you would instruct your TAC representative to, he knows what to do at this time. The last time that he participated, there was no indication, when they did the, what was it, the environmental...
EDM.
Yeah, the EDM? There was no motion from council at that time. The last thing that John got before that was, I had in the minutes, it shows that I had told the council, hey, happy days, we got money to do this horrible thing that everyone's apparently going to hate. And so, nobody said anything about it, and so John went ahead, and that's why he voted that way. But John knows better right now, right? If the council takes this vote.
I will, once the vote is taken.
Exactly. Once the vote is taken. Exactly. And so...
And they'll go to the MPO board, ask for a vote, and we'll be asking FDOT to stop this, you know, it'll be worded, whatever the wording is. I don't know exactly what it says at this point, but it's not coming out of any documents at this point. We're asking them like you asked them, to stop the study.
Okay. Yeah, Carl?
If I might, just for clarification, Don, it's my understanding that both of those committee meetings would take place in August, before your next MPO meeting, correct?
August 7th.
Okay.
Okay, and that is the next MPO meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the next possible opportunity. The MPO can't take action, of course, until it meets, right?
Right. August 22nd.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you. Did you have any more questions for Don?
No, no, just whatever committee it needs to go to to stop it, whatever process it needs to take to stop it, that's what, that's what I'm, that's what I'm making, that's the point I'm making.
And I'm really trying to understand the motion, because I'm going to be involved in this thing. If you, if the, if the TAC and the CAC both say, continue the study, you want this to discuss the MPO and someone to make a motion to stop the study?
Why would the TAC and the CAC?
I can't, I can't make that decision.
I don't know how any of them vote at this point. I don't, I mean, I'm not going to, I'm not going to...
But there wasn't a vote prior, right? So there wasn't a vote, it was just...
Sure there was. You mean the CAC and the TAC? Sure there was. They had a study, and they voted to take the study.
Well, okay, prioritize it, yes.
Yes, Audrey?
Thank you. If I could try to formalize the motion and read what I've drafted so far to see if everyone understands what is being requested in the motion.
Yeah, have at it.
It would be request the metropolitan, Lee County Metropolitan Planning Organization to request Florida Department of Transportation to stop the PDNE or permitting, design, and engineering study for the I-75, oh, sorry, I-75, the US 41 Bonita Beach Road intersection, and add to the MPO agenda of August 22, 2014, for a formal vote of the MPO after review by the TAC and CAC, which is the Technical Advisory Committee and CAC, on August 7, 2014. Further, instruct the Technical Advisory Committee member for Bonita Springs, the Citizen Advisory Committee members, there's two of them, for Bonita Springs, and the MPO members on how to vote on this subject.
Well, the only, you can instruct the TAC member, you cannot instruct the CAC member. There is, that's why they're citizens, they're Citizens Advisory Committee. I mean, I mean, you can, you can instruct everybody else with them. I don't think that that's appropriate, but if you want to make that...
I know I'm not going to instruct them how to vote, but you can tell them what the vote of the city council was.
There you go. There you go. That's fine.
As much as I may like it the other way.
That's fine. Yeah, yeah, but I had this argument with the people in Astero. When it came to 951, the people in Astero were like, you need to get control of your CAC and tell them not to vote for 951 anymore.